Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June 16, 2020 Glendale City Council Meeting. Due to evolving situation with COVID-19 and health recommendations from LA County Health Department, the Glendale City Council Meeting will be available to the public electronically. Due to social distancing requirements, the public will not be able to attend the meeting. This meeting can be viewed on local cable spectrum and charter cable channel 6 and AT&amp;T U-verse channel 99. You may also stream online through our website, www.glandelca.gov, by scrolling all the way to the bottom of the webpage and selecting live streaming, which is the third icon from the left. For public comments and questions during the meeting, call 818-937-8100. Please don't call in advance of the agenda either. With this being said, may I have roll call, please?
Councilmember Brockman?
Here.
Devine?
Here.
Isakian?
Here.
Najarian?
Here.
Mayor Agajanian?
Present. Thank you, Mr. Agajanian. I will lead the flag salute. Please join me for the pleasure of leading. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for tonight's invocation. Tonight, we give thanks for the continued blessing on this fine city and its leaders. We ask that you be a guide to our council in all of their considerations. We also ask that you be with us in our daily lives, that we may be positive role models for our future generations of leaders. Amen.
Thank you. Next item, please.
The agenda for the June 16, 2020, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Wednesday, June 10, 2020, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Next item, please.
3A would be agenda preview for the meetings of Tuesday, June 23, 2020.
Next.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, we do not have any meetings on the 23rd of June, hence, we will not have a report for you this evening on that item. We can move on to the next item.
Thank you. What's next?
Next item would be presentation Congressman Adam Schiff.
Congressman, welcome to Glendale City Council Meeting. And I just heard that you are in Washington. I was thinking that you are in Los Angeles. I was wondering if you would come one day and join us during this meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was in Los Angeles yesterday and just flew back to Washington, DC. But I appreciate the opportunity to address you in virtual form, and I look forward to, I hope, having a chance to come and address you in person.
Thank you.
I wanted to, at this appropriate time, just give a few thoughts on what we're working on in Congress, on what's taking place throughout the country. Would this be the right time?
Please go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to express my thoughts about the march and vigil in Glendale, which I was proud to participate in about a week or so ago. I thought it was extraordinary to see what appeared to me to be a few thousand people peacefully marching through the streets and then gathering to hear the speakers and think about the challenge the country faces in terms of rooting out systemic racism. What, to me, I think was the most powerful part of the day was kneeling in the pavement for eight minutes and 46 seconds and seeing just how interminably long that felt and trying to imagine what a terrible murder took place during those eight minutes and 46 seconds. And I think it really brought home to anyone who has paused for that period of time just how interminable that period was as George Floyd was struggling to breathe. I think that the response around the country gives us all hope that we can achieve meaningful change. In Congress, we have introduced probably the most comprehensive reform bill ever introduced in terms of criminal justice reform or police reform. It does a number of very important things. It tries to eliminate the practice of chokeholds, establishes funding for a database to track police officers who have a history of using excessive force that may move from department to department. It tries to eliminate no-knock warrants in drug cases. It tries to eliminate or modify the qualified immunity, as well as establish best practices in terms of escalation of force and de-escalation. So it does a number of things that I think are very important reforms, and I'm proud to be a co-sponsor on the legislation. But I think it's important to note that this is just one facet of the challenge facing our society that goes, you know, throughout the entire criminal justice system, but of course, beyond criminal justice to other areas of our society. I'm working on a bill that I hope to introduce soon on my own, working with leadership in the Black community to address the problem of racism within the healthcare system. We are seeing, of course, a terrible disparity in outcomes from the pandemic. African-Americans are many times more likely to die from the virus than members of other communities. In some areas where Black Americans may be 10% of the population, they represent over 40% of the casualties. Now, there are a number of reasons for this, but, you know, in part due to unequal access to healthcare to begin with, but also, it has been all too common an experience when Black Americans go to a hospital that they get subpar treatment, and it's that problem in particular that my bill will try to address. But I think this is a very important moment in our nation's history, where we're really coming to grips with something that has plagued us for hundreds of years, and to do so in a meaningful way, not an incremental way. But I was very proud to participate in marches throughout my district, including that very powerful march and vigil in Glendale. On the other issues that we're confronting, the pandemic and the economic fallout from the pandemic, there is still a lot we have to do in terms of ramping up the testing capability nationwide. We're even, I think, further behind when it comes to having the tracing capability, the people power to do the tracing, which is really vital to a successful reopening of the economy. You have to be able to identify if the virus resurges, where there's an outbreak, and then be able to shut it down, and we're not there yet. And so, I'm deeply concerned that we haven't had the kind of leadership that we need from the administration, either on the testing front or on the tracing front. I think we are seeing enormous work on the treatment and vaccination fronts with, really, I think, now in excess of 100 clinical trials of treatments going on, several candidates for vaccines that are also in clinical trials. So that's probably the most optimistic aspect of the healthcare response to the pandemic. In terms of the economic impacts, as you all know, we have passed a number of very important bipartisan bills to try to help people with extended unemployment compensation, the small business PPP program, disaster loans, a mid-sized company lending facility, a large industry fund, and as well, we've tried to help by funding the efforts to deal with what was already an epidemic but is made much more dangerous by the pandemic, and that is the epidemic of homelessness. But there's a lot more to do, and in the House, we recently passed the HEROES Act. That bill would provide $300 billion to $400 billion for local government, which I think is really important, and close to $1 trillion for state and local government altogether. Otherwise, we risk seeing a cascading wave of layoffs, of drop-off in essential services, teachers with pink slips, and just prolonged economic misery, as well as layoffs that would impede the emergency responders and the healthcare response. So, the HEROES Act is a very important infusion of local and state resources, as well as an extension of unemployment compensation. It provides a substantial amount for renters to try to keep renters with a roof over the head, as well as homeowners, and also an infusion of resources back into our healthcare system to deal with the continuing impacts of the pandemic. But let me pause there. These are the issues that we are working on right now. I'm very mindful of the challenge facing cities like Glendale and want to help in any way I can, so I look forward to your comments and your questions tonight.
Is there any comment or question from Congressman, from my colleague?
Question?
Yes, Ms. Devine.
Yes, the HEROES funding, when will that be in effect? When can the cities expect to see that funding?
Well, we passed it in the House. Mitch McConnell has said that he won't take up any bill before July. And there is a divergence of the parties on several of the issues that, you know, I think we were fortunate up until now to be able to get to yes so quickly on some very major legislation, but there's a divergence. One of the parties, Mitch McConnell, I think, as a leader in the Senate of the Republican Party, has said that maybe we should contemplate and allow states to go bankrupt. So, among the Republican leadership, there isn't really yet a full buy-in to the idea that the federal government should help states avoid bankruptcy right now. Now, I think it would be disastrous to have states like California on the edge of bankruptcy or forced over the edge. California, I think, was quite prudent and built up a substantial rating day fund, which is depleting or has depleted. No state, frankly, could anticipate going from almost complete unemployment to Great Depression levels of unemployment. So, but there is a divergence of the parties on this issue, as well as on the issue of extending unemployment compensation, helping states mitigate the costs of absentee ballots at a time when it may not be safe in the fall, when the virus is expected to resurge to crowd-pulling places. So there are a number of issues that have yet to be worked out. I hope they can be worked out soon, though, because so many Americans are still struggling, and even conservative economists right now are saying this is not the time to be penny-wise and pound-foolish. The more distressed we allow the country to fall into, the more difficult and elongated will be our recovery. So, I think there's a real imperative that we move quickly and that we help those that are in need of assistance right now.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Congressman. Ms. Devine, do you have any other question?
No, not right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us, Congressman. There is a question from Mr. Isakian.
Congressman, thank you very much for your leadership in Washington. I know that these have been difficult times, and it seems like around every corner, there's a new challenge that you're facing, and we appreciate your leadership and dedication to your constituents here. In terms of the assistance, I appreciate that on the House side, at least from the Speaker and yourself and others, there was an effort to fight for more funding for local municipalities in terms of assistance. But ultimately, we continue to hear from individuals who call for rent elimination or forgiveness, and we know that realistically, that is not something that can be implemented on the local level. It creates a domino effect which could impact, it could have very severe impacts across the board for the economy. Has there been any discussions in terms of leaning on some of the banking, the big banks, to ensure that they will do something that will help provide some sort of forgiveness or forbearance across the board nationally that then we can institute in various states and locally?
You know, what we have done nationally is, and this is as far as our reach, I think, goes, with respect to the lenders, we have provided that no one can be foreclosed upon if they're in a property that is guaranteed by a federal loan. So, if there's a federal guarantee, and so many are done through Freddie and Fannie, we have placed a moratorium on foreclosure. Now, that's not indefinite, and like probably the rent eviction moratoriums that you've had locally, it doesn't forgive those payments coming due when the pandemic comes to an end, and I think you're absolutely right. We're going to have to figure this out, or when that relief stops, you could very well have a domino effect where renters can't pay that balloon rent and homeowners can't pay that huge mortgage payment because they still haven't recovered financially, and you have this cascading wave of evictions and foreclosures like we did in 2009. So, we're going to have to figure this out. In the HEROES Act, we do provide $100 billion to help renters pay the rent, and $75 billion for homeowners who are in distress. So, I mean, this is really, the best answer is to help people continue to pay their rent and pay their mortgage. You know, frankly, I've been urging for the last several months that we go big, that we follow what Europe is doing with Germany, what Britain, France, many Norwegian countries are doing, and they're simply acting, the federal government is acting as a guarantor of payroll right now. Large, medium, and small businesses, as well as local governments, they're guaranteeing payroll, maybe 80%, 90% of payroll. The result is, people haven't lost their jobs, nowhere near the kind of unemployment we have, and because they remain employed, even though they may not be able to go to work, they're able to make their rent payments, they're able to make their home payments. That, to me, makes much more sense than the kind of patchwork approach that we've adopted so far. So I'm going to continue pushing for that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Congressman.
Mayor, can I just say one other thing that I found really uplifting, and I would encourage any of our common constituents who are watching to try as well? I had the opportunity to help deliver meals with Glendale Adult Services as part of the Glendale Meals on Wheels effort, as well as a similar effort in our meaning community with the COVID Task Force. It's a really wonderful example of the city and the community coming together to help those most in need, and they are desperately in need of volunteers because the need is greater than ever. Some of the people that we were delivering food to had been volunteers and contributors to those efforts, and now they themselves needed to depend upon them. But the demand is greater than ever, the number of volunteers is less than usual because people have been afraid to go out, but these are things you can do, and I think you can do safely, and it's a great way to help people, and I was really delighted to see Glendale performing those kind of services.
Thank you. Of course, I have to mention, last Tuesday, I was with Congressman, and we were trying to help distribute food, which in, where was that, on the Colorado?
The recreation center. The adult recreation center.
Adult Recreation Center. We were together. Thank you for your help, anyway.
Well, and a special shout-out to Allison, who I was able to go on her rounds with her, delivering meals, and I also want to shout out Yvette, who is doing such great work with the homeless in Glendale. You've got some superb people working for the city of Glendale.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Hopefully, we'll see you soon.
Thank you. Thanks for letting me join you tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do well, everyone.
What's next?
Next would be appointment of board and commission members. C would be Asul Agresen Transportation and Parking Commission.
My suggestion would be, and I think Councilmember Devine would prefer you read all of them, all the names.
All of them together. Before we do that, can you, Councilmember Devine, say, who is new appointee on the list? Just mention the name of those who are newly appointed on the board.
Actually, Mayor, they are all being reappointed. I am very proud of every one of them. They have done a stellar job. They contribute to their boards and their commissions, and so I'm reappointing all of them.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Do we have?
Mr. Agajanian needs to read all the names into the record.
Read all the names, please.
C would be appointment of boards and commission member, Ashul Agresen Transportation and Parking Commission. D, appointment of board and commission member, Chang Lee Planning Commission. E, appointment of board and commission member, Catherine Everly Parks Recreation and Community Service Commission. F, appointment of boards and commission member, Sir Juny Law Glendale Water and Power Commission. G, appointment of boards and commission member, Christopher Welch Design Review Board. And H would be appointment of boards and commission member, Lila Ramirez CDBG Committee. I would be appointment of boards and commission member, Armin Perian Commission on the Status of Women. J, appointment of board and commission member, Stephen Lee Building and Fire Boards Appeal. K would be appointment of boards and commission member, Thomas O'Shanacy Audit Committee.
Okay, thank you. Now, I guess we're voting on?
All those can be moved at the same time by Councilmember Devine unless there's an objection by any council member.
There is no objection from me.
Okay.
Mayor, I do believe one of the commissioners is online, or?
Oh, good.
Okay, we can listen to the, please mention your name.
I guess they dropped off.
They dropped off.
Yes.
Okay. All right. So are we voting on?
Yeah. They just didn't, well, they were moved last week. Yes, they can be taken and voted.
Oh. Okay. We don't need to make a motion now.
No.
Okay.
Okay.
Do we have a motion to approve my nominations?
We'll take that as the motion. It doesn't need a second unless there's any objection from any council.
Okay.
You can go.
Any objection? No.
No?
Okay.
You need to still take the vote. I just want to make sure.
We will take the vote, okay? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Isakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes.
What's next, please?
Next item would be consent items, including minutes. The following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of the council or the audience requesting severance consideration may do so by making such request before a motion is proposed.
I have a motion for these items?
I'll move the consent calendar.
Do I have? It's okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Isakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes.
Okay, what's next, please?
Next would be city council and staff comments.
Okay, I would like to invite my colleagues to share any comments that they have.
Ms. Devine?
One second. Councilmember Najarian.
You're good at game shows, Ms. Devine. You hit that button quickly. I just have a quick one. I just have a quick one, and then I'll yield to you. I heard that the 24-hour fitness organization will be closing the Glendale location, and I'm sorry to see the loss of jobs and the loss of recreational opportunities for our residents, but let's find a good fit in that location because it was really a very high demand, high usage, high parking facility that is really on one of the best corners in Glendale. So just a shout-out to, let's think about that and maybe court or cater to a very good, it's a privately owned building, but let's see if we can find a very good fit for there.
Thank you. Councilmember Devine?
Okay. I wanted to nominate, please, for the Arts and Culture Commission. Sorry, we moved so quickly from appointments. I'd like to nominate Sue Bell Yank for the Glendale Arts and Culture Commission. And, secondly, it's with another saddened heart that I request that we adjourn tonight's meeting in memory and in honor of Jerry Rankin, and I think we have a photo of Jerry. And I think all of us on council know Jerry. He's been to council many times. He was 83 when he passed on May 17th. He grew up in Shoal Canyon. He attended Glendale High School and Occidental College and graduated from UC Berkeley. He spent summers as a young man, working for the U.S. Forest Service with his dad and brother, and this contributed to his conviction that nature is sacred, and it was his duty to protect it. He married Mary, his wife, and they purchased the home in Shoal Canyon in 1961, and she is still living there. Jerry helped create the Human Relations Council in the 60s. Boy, do we need him now, with the goal of promoting understanding among people of all races and ethnicities in Glendale. Jerry, as we all knew him, was a staunch environmentalist. He was a leader in the Glen Oaks Canyon Homeowners Association, and he worked tirelessly to protect the surrounding hills from careless urban development. He became very active in the last few years in the opposition to the expansion of the Shoal Canyon landfill. Jerry consistently followed the path of what he believed was right. He's survived by Mary, his wife, two daughters, Karen and Martha, brother, and three grandchildren. He loved Glendale, and he gave him great pride to serve his community in committed and constructive ways. So I request that we adjourn this evening in Jerry Rankin's memory. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll do that. Okay, is there any other comment? Okay, now, one?
Actually, well, besides adding my word of condolences to the Rankin family and saying it is a loss, again, I'm shocked. I did not know that he had passed, and I'm glad that will be adjourned in his memory. On another note, I would like to ask the city manager to give us an update about the use of some of our fields for organized sports. I know that there's a lot of different moving pieces. There's been some chatter on some of the social media sites that I've been privy to because I was copied on some of the comments. And I'd like you, or perhaps, I see Mr. Bolanikian coming up, our Director of Community Services and Parks, to give an update as to, as the weather warms up and families get more and more antsy at home with the little ones, what is allowed and what isn't allowed on our fields? Today, yeah, before it changes tomorrow, and then again next week.
Ms. Yasmin Beers?
Yes, sir. We're going to go directly to Mr. Bolanikian.
And Mr. Bolanikian, in addition to that, perhaps, you can also give us a quick update as to what's going on with our day camps and any other facilities that you think are appropriate to talk about, maybe the pool.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Agajanian, members of the council. We'll start with day camps. Our day camp programs will start July 6th. Registration for Glendale residents will be held June 22nd, for non-residents, June 23rd. They will run for six weeks. We have reduced the cost of all of our day camps at a flat rate of $75 per child per week compared to $150 to $185 from previous years. The day camp program will be, will have reduced programming, no field trips, no swimming. It'll be basically a childcare program to assist working parents in childcare. Pacific Community Pool opened on Monday. For this week, we're open Monday through Friday, 6:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Saturday, Sunday, we're open 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 for recreational lap swimming. Eventually, once we start our summer programs, we'll expand to have swim classes, swim teams, and recreational swimming. We will practice social distancing. All of our programs will follow LA County protocols that were put in place for social distancing and sanitizing and so forth. We will have health inspectors visit our pools on an ongoing basis, making sure we're following protocols. So if any of our viewers, if they have any questions in regards to our programs, they can call 818-548-2000, 818-548-2000. In regards to our fields, the fields are currently closed, but we are working with LA County on allowing youth groups to have day camp, skills camp, sports programming for their participants. Actual practices or inter-team practices and games are not allowed, but if a youth group wants to come in and have a baseball clinic, have a soccer clinic, we're making the fields available. Right now, we have the sports complex and Pacific Community Center fields available if any of our teams want to have clinics or day camp program during the day. We have received, we did send out an email to all of our teams this afternoon. Right after that email was sent out, staff received over 40 emails requesting time. So it looks like we will be expanding fields to Shoal, Montrose, and Tunsmore. We're just working with our Park Services section to get all the fields online.
And our tennis courts are open?
Tennis courts are open. Our trails are open, tennis courts are open, pickleball courts are open, and the questions center over at Riverwalk.
So, yes, did you say swimming pools are open, too?
Yes, the swimming pools are open.
For everybody?
For everyone.
As of last week?
As of last week.
By reservation?
By reservation, yes.
One per lane?
One per lane.
Or one household, family household per lane?
Yes, one family household per lane, and also for recreation swimming, they have to be six feet apart. Basically, one swimmer needs close to 113 square feet in the swimming pool. So we're asking swimmers and participants that want to come, reserve first, because there will be a line.
So it's on reservation?
It's on a reservation basis.
Only?
Only.
Because otherwise, it will be hard to control. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Brot?
Yes, I have, I have two items I want to discuss. One is to continue on, you know, the conversation we've been having on Black Lives Matter and racial justice, and I wanted to first remind everybody about the series that colleagues at Glendale College have been putting on. It's called Deconstructing Racism. There have been three sessions so far. They were all very good. There's one tonight, which I'm unfortunately having to miss, and then there are three more, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. Friday might be a good one for everybody because it'll be an open discussion and Q&amp;A with faculty at Glendale College. So I want to encourage everybody out there that's watching to attend if they haven't been already. And is this, Ms. Beers, on our website? We have?
It's on our social media platforms. I'm not sure if it was placed on the website or not, but we have pushed it since last week and prior to the start of each of the classes, where we find that most individuals who do see it at that moment will tend to sign up at that moment and not forget about it. So we're doing it prior to the classes as well. But I'll check to see if it's on our website.
Maybe if we could push it out again or something. Anyway, it's been, I think for me, it's been a good way to take a little bit of time and reflect. All this is, you know, hitting us very quickly, and it's, I think it's been useful. But as we all know, we're not going to be leaving it here. We have a lot more work to do. And so I've been thinking about, you know, what are the next steps we can take as a city? And I want to propose two things right now. The first is that we do a deep dive on our policing policies and practices and identify areas where we can do better. And I want to make this really clear that I think we have a top-notch police force. I think we're several cuts above, and this is in no way a, you know, a scapegoating of our, of the police or anything like that. And that, that view is shared by a lot of the community leaders, Black in Glendale and others, and I've spoken to people, and I know there is a great deal of respect for our, our police force and what they do. Nonetheless, I think we can, as our chief says, we can always do better, and I think we should do a deep dive. And on that, there was a letter, I think we all received today from three groups, Civic Sundays, YWCA, and Black in Glendale, with a long list of questions and looking for data, looking for information about policies. So I would like to see us respond to that, and also, if we could add to that, you know, the Attorney General, yesterday, California Attorney General Becerra came out with a set of proposed reforms, and I just looked through it briefly, but there's specific things on use of force policies. Anyway, I would, I would like staff to prepare a report with answers to the questions that we got in that letter, as well as, you know, where we stand with respect to the things that the Attorney General is suggesting. And then the question is, what do we do with this? So I, I don't want to just see this come back at a council session. I would suggest that we kind of bring this into a public discussion through a town hall, and I've, I've spoken to Tara Peterson, and she would be very interested in helping organize something from the community side, and if the city could support it in some way, I think that would be fantastic. I understand that she's already been talking to someone named Alex, and I forget his last name, who's part of a new, yeah, new kind of community impact team or something like that. I probably don't have the right terminology for it, but, and I'm just, I don't know anything about this, but, you know, putting it out there, could that be a forum for some kind of a discussion with, with community leaders and the police? And then we bring it back into a town hall. I'm going to leave that open and just say, if, if staff could talk to Tara, I think she could play a really good role in organizing something so that we can get the information out there, see where we are, take stock, and let the public understand and start hearing about what, what people want. So that's, that's one part. The other thing I would like us to start working on is a look into our historic legacy, and we've talked about this, you know, Glendale was a sundown town, and I haven't been around long enough to know how we have recognized that, but I think that we should. And I know that some of the folks at Glendale College and the Glendale Historical Society would be interested in working on a program around that. So I would like us to support that as well. So those are, those are the two steps, and this is not everything that we're going to do, of course, but I think, you know, we want to get, get the ball rolling on some things, and I think those are two places that would be healthy for us to start. So number one, deep dive on policing. Number two, a look at our, our legacy and, and how that, you know, plays out into, you know, who we are today. I mean, we've overcome a lot of it, but I'm sure we, you know, there's still a lot that we have yet to overcome. So that's, that would be, that's one. I have one more.
Oh, that's one. Okay.
I have one more.
What's the next one?
Okay. My next one is totally different subject. It's about Grayson, and I just want to, I just want to, you know, say, I'm, I am concerned about the pace of progress on the clean energy alternatives to Grayson. It's been two years, hard to believe, but two years since council directed Glendale Water and Power to look at alternatives, clean alternatives. And it's been almost a year since GWP came back and briefed this council on the results of the Clean Energy RFP and got authorization to proceed with four proposals. And as of today, we still don't have a single local clean energy project signed, let alone implemented. So I, and council, as you know, set out a number of other conditions for Glendale Water and Power to, to meet before coming back with any proposal for additional gas. So what I would like is, is a report. I understand there's something planned maybe in August. I think that's a little too far away. I would like to see something sooner than that with a status report, and it should cover five things, which I'll just read off here. One is, what is the status, what are our expectations for the clean energy projects that have come out of the RFP, including a timeline for final approval and implementation? Two, given that GWP didn't move on some of the key proposals, most importantly, commercial on, I'm sorry, solar on commercial buildings and storage, what are the plans to follow up with RFPs for additional resources? Number three, what's the status of efforts to identify additional transmission opportunities? Number four, what is the status of discussions with LA Department of Water and Power to address collectively the reliability and reserve challenges through existing or new agreements? And finally, what is the progress on the plans to map out a path to 100% zero carbon by 2030, as Councilmember Devine raised now about a year ago, and, and the council agreed to include in the, in the condition? So those are the five things I would like to hear a report on as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll second the, actually, I'll second both items. Why not? Let's have a discussion on both of those.
Thank you very much, and sorry I went so long, but it was a lot, and next week we're dark, so.
Thank you.
On, on the first item that, that Councilmember Brotman brought up, that is something that we anticipated responding to in terms of the email that was sent to us today, and information that is available and, and records that are available. Each item will be responded to accordingly, and of course, the council would receive that information as well. You all received that email this afternoon from Michelle Rojas Soto, I believe. And on the other? And on the other items, I anticipated the request that came from Councilmember Kosakian a couple of weeks ago is something that we would bring to council, and much of what you brought up as well, Councilmember Brottman, would be part of the items that were requested a few weeks ago in terms of inclusion, diversity, et cetera. And so, we're trying to, to manage, I, I think, the requests that are coming by way of council members and our ability to be able to respond to the requests that are, that are coming on Tuesdays and provide it in the most timely manner. And so, if it pleases the council, we anticipate putting some of these items together and providing one report that would be coming end of July, beginning of August. Going back to what Councilmember Kosakian asked two weeks ago, and then Councilmember Devine asked last week, and we added some pieces to it, and, and the pieces that you've asked for as well, we'll make sure that all of those pieces are, are part of the report, and we would provide that to the city council at, at that time, and, and provide you with, with a comprehensive report and be able to get some feedback from council at that time in terms of steps that we need to take forward. In terms of Grayson, as you know, and we've had numerous conversations by way of operational briefings with multiple departments, but in particular with GWP, that item will be before the council in end of July, August. If we're able to provide any information prior to that, based on the request that, that you brought forward today, which will be part of the discussion coming forward, we'll provide that by way of a memo to the city council and bring forward the agenda reports, again, as, as soon as we possibly can, anticipated in July, but, in August, but if we can bring it forward sooner, we...
Okay.
Thank you.
And, and just on, on the, on the first point, so I, I know there's been a lot of stuff asked of you and lots of emails, and, 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 you know, it's, it's probably pretty overwhelming, so I get it. What I, what I'm talking about is something more than just a report to council. I mean, maybe we can start with that. We can do a report to council, but I don't think it's just a matter of us discussing it. We need to bring it to a, some kind of a town hall or a forum. So, if you think that's a two-step process, that's fine. I just know there are people out there, and you know them too, who are eager to help organize something and start this, this dialogue so that we can start thinking about, you know, what, what I want to avoid is we just jump into policy actions, and I was talking to Councilmember Kosakian about this as well, you know. We see a lot of knee-jerk actions being taken place in other places, and I don't think that's how we want to operate. I think we want to take stock first, because I think we've got a lot of things that are right. I want to acknowledge those and then be thoughtful about what we need to do from there.
We don't disagree with you at all.
Thank you.
If I can just say, I, I support that, but I'm not ready to commit a part, in other words, I'm not sure if Tara Peterson was nominated to be the moderator. I think she may have more questions to ask than that.
Yeah, more, more the organizer.
Organizer.
And she would bring in a moderator, and we could, you know, maybe be part of that too, so.
As long as the city's involved with it and setting it up.
It would be a partnership throughout.
That would be, that would be ideal, and, and I think, you know, with, with our police chief as well, I think should be definitely part of that partnership. And I know there already is a good partnership with Tara around domestic violence, so I'm confident they can, they can work on that together.
Partnerships are in place, as, you know, they have been for many, many years. It's, it's expanding that partnership, as, as I think you all have stated, and, and making sure that, you know, we're all working together and, and moving forward with, with one another. Absolutely. We're, we're in agreement with everything that council's brought forward, and we're going to do our best to provide that, that forum.
Thank you.
Ms. Devine?
Yes, I, I, I just wanted to mention that that was what I suggested last week with some sort of a task force, a committee, a, a meeting of all the leaders in our community, including Black Lives Matter, the LGBTQ, the YMCA, the YWCA, everyone, get together and let's, let's see what the, the reforms that we're looking for, or they're looking for, look like. And then we can, then council can go from there. But that's, that's been suggested and re-suggested, and I trust that Yasmin, that you're going to be taking care of that in the not-so-distant future. And who is, who is the moderator or who is in charge? I don't know that, I, I just, I think the city has to be a part, a, a big part with the police department in any kind of committee or task force that we put together. Amen.
Thank you. Okay. Now, I want to go to staff comments, and I would like to ask our treasurer, Rafi Manukin, to come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Welcome.
Councilmembers, good evening. As you know, the council appointed me to the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy Advisory Board, and I wanted to, at the request of some council members, I wanted to brief, to give you a brief report today regarding my first meeting. By way of background, the Santa Monica, the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy is comprised of two boards, the Conservancy Board and the Advisory Board. The Conservancy Board is nine voting members, three ex-officio, and six legislative members. And the Advisory Board is comprised of 26 community members made up of different community members and appointments, different city representatives. I attended, I attended the first meeting of the Conservancy via Zoom on June 1st as a community member representing the City of Gondale as an advisory board member. There were over 100 participants in the Zoom meeting. That was the biggest meeting, Zoom meeting I've ever attended. Notable actions by the Conservancy, the approval and adoption of the Upper Los Angeles River Tributaries Revitalization Plan, which includes the, the Elieho Canyon Wash, the Pocoyoa Wash, the, the Tohanga Wash, Burbank Western Channel, the Verdugo Wash, and the Aroya Seco. The plan highlights communities along the Upper Los Angeles River watershed and that are optimal opportunities for open space, multi-benefit parks, ecological connectors and enhancements to cultural centers, while also fostering recreation and stewardship. This plan was a culmination of two years of planning and work by the Conservancy and the community. The Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy also unanimously approved three grants totaling $10 million in state Proposition 1 funding for the first project of the 100-acre partnership at Taylor Yard, the project known as the Paseo del Rio Project, which will be approximately one mile long, riverfront, greenway, with amenities developed with extensive community input. As this was my first meeting, I am still getting to know everyone, and will certainly be looking out for opportunities for the City of Gondale. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If there is no question, okay, we go to community event announcement, Mr.?
Mayor, it doesn't look like there's any phone calls.
There is no phone calls. But however, I just want to, maybe I had to announce that there is a phone number on the bottom of that little number on the bottom of the screen, 818-937-8100. If anyone wishes to express himself or say, talk about any issue, this is the time for the community events announcement or, or any other issue which comes to your mind. Apparently, we don't have any still, right, Mr. Jimmy?
There are no calls.
Oh, we have?
No phone.
We have two calls.
We have.
Okay. We go to the phone calls, so whoever wishes to express himself, this is the time. You are on the air with mayor and city council members and the staff. Hello? Hello?
Hello?
Yes?
Hello? Hello? Yes? Hello?
Lower your...
This is Mike Moehl, Mike first.
Mike, lower your...
This is Mike Moehl, Mike first.
Mr. Moehl, go away from the TV set or the computer, and then you can talk, will be much clearer.
Thank you very much. I'm ready to speak. Thank you.
Yes, please, go ahead.
Aram, would you please put on my PowerPoint?
Yes, please. One second. Yes, go ahead. Now we can see.
I, I can't, I can't see the PowerPoint on the screen. There it is. Okay. Councilmembers and members of the viewing audience, this is a presentation of the outrageous salaries and pensions of our city's union workforce. The California Governor, Gavin Newsom, salary is $310,000 a year in 2019. And we have an elite 12 city directors. Their salaries and pensions are below. City Manager Yasmin Beers, $411,000. Then we have, you can look at the chart, ladies and gentlemen, the viewing audience, $473,000, $400,000. City Attorney Mike Garcia, $413,000. GWP Manager Steve Zern, $386,000. We have Assistant City Manager, $360,000. A Deputy Assistant Manager, $303,000. A Director of Human Resources, $308,000. Director of Finance, $271,000. A Community Development Director, $325,000. Director of Community Services and Parks, $277,000. This is salaries and benefits for 2019 and Public Works. And last week, this council approved pay raises, step increases for our managers of the City of Glendale. People are hurting in the city, and this city council, with the leadership of our city manager, has the audacity to give pay raises. We should be cutting salaries. Why don't, why are we not reducing staff? Why do we need two assistants in the management department or GWP department? And, you know, it's nice to know that Arti Kosakian was the only council member who voted against that pay raise. Yet, the unions can always count on Councilmen, our Nigerian, Paula Devine, they always go the union route. Mr. Brottman, I'm surprised. You're supposed to be this fiscal conservative that you're coming off lately, and yet you have the audacity to approve this pay raise. Why? Why? You say, oh, the, the budget was rosy. If it was so rosy, why would you give a pay raise? Why don't you be consistent? How do you tell the people who are now getting food stamps or getting assistance all over the city, and you go ahead and get pay raises? And yet, you're coming across as this great fiscal conservative, Mr. Brottman. Shame on you. There should be a, you mentioned a rosy, a rosy budget. This, this pay raise should not have been there, and we need to do something now, not after the fact, as, as the city manager's saying, well, you know what? If we don't do it now, we'll fix it later. Well, you know, later doesn't happen. Later does not happen.
Okay.
You need to be proactive and not reactive.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. You are on the air with the city council, mayor, and the staff. Hello?
Hello?
Yes, you're on the air.
Hi. Hi, I'm good. My name's Michelle. Thanks for taking my call. I actually was calling in today. Can you hear me?
Yes, please, go ahead.
I wanted to know if the City of Glendale was going to extend the rental protections past the end of June. There hasn't been anything updated, and, you know, there are still people in the city that aren't working due to COVID, and if anything, EDD has yet to pay a lot of people, so I just need to make sure that you guys will extend the protection.
Okay. Is there any other comments or anything you want to mention?
No, I mean, that's it for now, but it should be extended.
We don't get them all with question and answers. You can just express yourself. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you. You are on the air with mayor, city council members, and staff.
Hello, sir?
Yes, I'm listening. We are listening.
Yes, hi. I'll just provide brief comments about the police and the funding issue. My name's Aaron, and my wife and I have been a resident, or have been residents in Glendale since 2012. We live up in the Shoal Canyon area, and prior to that, we lived in Los, in Los Angeles for many, many years. And while I don't want to denigrate the LAPD, I just wanted to essentially say that, and I know it's comparing apples to oranges to some degree, but we've been extremely happy with the service provided by the Glendale Police Officers. And for the size of the city, the crime problems that you have, I truly think that the, the men and women of Glendale Police Department provide exceptional service, and I would hope that the council would think very seriously in the future about whether it's appropriate to reduce their funding or in any way defund them, as has been called on by some of the popular movements on the left such as Black Lives Matter. So, I know that it's a complex issue, and things need to be addressed and carefully looked at, but from our perspective, they do an exceptional job, and we deeply value them, and we hope that they're not in any way hurt by any potential funding decreases in the future.
Thank you very much. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you very much, sir.
All right, thank you.
Okay, bye-bye.
Bye. Okay. All right, okay. There is no more phone calls, so we go to the next item, please.
Seven would be adoption of ordinances, 7A Glendale Water and Power, regarding Glendale Water and Power Revenue Refunding Bonds 2020. One would be ordinance adoption authorizing the issuance of water revenue bonds 2020, refunding series in the amount up to $41 million. Two, resolution authorizing the invitation of bids for the purchase of water revenue bonds 2020, refunding series of the City of Glendale approving a notice of intention to sell bonds, a preliminary, a preliminary official statement, a notice inviting bids in official bid form, authorizing the publication of a notice of intention to sell bonds, authorizing the execution and delivery, delivery of a final official statement, a third supplement to indenture of trust, a continuing disclosure agreement, and an escrow agreement, and authorizing the award of the bonds.
Thank you. Ms. Yasmin Beers?
Yes, Mayor, Mayor Argajanian. Mayor Argajanian, members of the city council, this item was before you last Tuesday related to GWP's water bonds. If you have any questions, Mr. Zern is here to answer them, but we provided a presentation last Tuesday. I'm not sure if you needed another presentation this evening.
I'll move the item.
Before, before we do that, I have a question for Mr. Zern. Mr. Zern, again, briefly, we said we are lowering the rate from 3.95 to 2.55. And still, my question is, why we are writing on the ordinance that 5.5 per annum figure?
So, I hope you can hear me, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. And Victor Schu, our outside legal counsel, is on the call, as he, he explained the strategy behind that. First and foremost is, we, we will never accept, I would never recommend to you nor, and I think you would approve, anything higher than what we have now. The strategy...
It's 2.55.
No, right now, we're 2.95. So, we would never go higher than we, we currently are. 2, 2.15 is what we're projecting to get on, on what I will refer to as a traditional refunding. The 5.5 is related to what's called premium bond issues. This is a little bit different strategy that some bond investors will use, where they fund more than 100% of the par value or face value of the bond. It sits at a higher interest rate because it has to do with their reselling of the bonds, but the agency, us, the issuing agency, oftentimes can reap even a better benefit from that. The likelihood is, we'll, we'll go with a traditional bond funding scenario, but this just allows us to cast a wider net. Because of the current economic situation, these premium bonds have, have shown a little bit more popularity right now. So, it doesn't hurt us to at least put it out there. It's a bid process. At the end of the day, we will evaluate the bids, and if there's something there, we'll come back and, and make our recommendation to you. But all it does is it allows us to cast a wider net and potentially have a better opportunity to get the best deal.
Okay, thank you. Is there, do we have somebody to join us, you said?
No, only if you needed more detailed information. No, only if you needed more detailed information.
Is there any other question?
I'll second, although, I was gonna say, I'll second Ms. Devine's motion. But it generally is our custom to permit the person who introduced the ordinance to make the motion. That's all. I mean, just as, so in other words, you had made them, you had introduced this.
Mr. Brotman, you're wanting to introduce the motion.
Okay, I will move the item.
Honored.
Ms. Devine, you are seconding the motion?
I will.
Yes, okay.
Mr. Mayor, you have a one speaker on the speaker.
Oh, we have a speaker. I'm very sorry.
Sorry about that.
Okay. You are on the air with City Council Members, Mayor, and the staff.
Hi there. This is Mike Mohill.
Yes, please. Go ahead.
I'm very upset with this transfer, or actually with this bond. You know, yes, you're basically refinancing the bond we already have. But you know what? If we did not transfer millions of dollars every year out of GWP to the general fund to pay for the unsustainable and outrageous salaries and pensions of our union workforce, we wouldn't have to need bonds. And last week, Councilmen Nijarian, Agajanian, and Casakian, all three voted for this transfer. And Mrs. Devine and Mr. Brotman voted against it. Councilmember Nijarian, Agajanian, and Casakian, why? Tell me, why would you vote for this transfer? Because now we need a bond. If we didn't have transfers of millions of dollars every year, the taxpayers of Glendale would not be stuck with these bonds. This is nothing but borrowing money. Go into the bank and borrow money. And this goes to our Police and Fire Department, a lot of this money. By the way, speaking about our Police Department, I respect our Police Department. We should not defund them. They do a great job. Thank you, Mr. Carl Provolitis, the Police Chief and the whole department. But your pension, sir, is affecting the GWP transfer because most of that money goes for your union pensions. Pensions and pensions. For a policeman to receive 90% of his last year's salary as his pension for life after 30 years of service is outrageous when the rest of the world, in California and elsewhere, is on Social Security. Average Social Security recipient is only $16,000. If my name was Bill Gates, I would get a maximum $36,000. So this GWP refinancing of this bond is, should never be here. Shame on this council that continues to pass bonds. Bonds are a liability for our children and grandchildren. Be fiscal responsible. And then you, and then go out and ask the federal government or state government to have a welfare check to the City of Glendale. You know, you spend wildly when you take campaign money, Mr. Nijarian especially, or Ms. Devine. You are beholden to the people who give you campaign contributions. And the Police and Fire Department have given you guys thousands of dollars in campaign contributions. And who will be next on the City Council to be recipients of their money? So this bond is nothing but a smokescreen of the fiscal irresponsibility that's going on in this city. Shame on this council and the previous council who allowed this to continue every, every year. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Okay, we are done with this item. So what's next?
Roll call.
Roll call.
Roll call, yes. Roll call.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Casakian?
Yes.
Nijarian?
Yes.
And Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. What's next?
It would be Community Development Regarding Adoption of an Urgency Ordinance, Adding Chapter 8.10 to Title 8, the Glendale Municipal Code, Pertaining to Hospitality Workers' Workplace Protection.
Thank you.
Mayor, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Garcia.
This ordinance was introduced last week, by Councilmember Devine. The council introduced the ordinance with the changes requested by Unite Here, and there were also a couple of changes that were requested by the Hotel Owners Group. The council was amenable to those changes, so the revised ordinance is before you for adoption.
So this, this item, I can move?
Yes, is there anything?
Yes, you introduced it last week.
No, but is there anything?
Ms. Powers is on the next item, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All right, so we have...
Second.
Okay, we have the motion, and we have the second from Sir Brotman. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Casakian?
Yes.
Nijarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. What's next, please?
Next would be action items, Management Services Regarding Legislative Update, Motion to Note and File the Legislative Update.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes.
Members of the City...
Yasmin Beers.
Yes, sir. Members of the City Council, Mayor Agajanian, we will go directly to Ms. Powers, who will provide you with information related to this item. And we also have, I believe, Kira and David, who are on WebEx and will be joining us from Sacramento and providing context and answering any questions that council may have on this item. With that, we'll go directly to Ms. Powers.
Good evening, Mayor Agajanian, Council Members and Staff.
Christine Powers, as Ms. Beers mentioned, and we do have our team from Emmanuel Jones &amp; Associates, who will be jumping in to the presentation momentarily. So, sorry, I'm just trying to make sure the PowerPoint is up before I start. I apologize. Yeah, that's okay. I'll go ahead and get started. So our legislative platform outlines the city's position on legislative matters and serves as our foundation for the city to support, remain neutral, which you'll see marked as watch on the staff report, or oppose positions on legislation. This platform was constructed using the guiding priorities of the City Council as outlined in the City of Glendale's annual report, and it was last updated in 2019 to include local control. That was one of the more obvious tenets of what we did, but we wanted to make sure it was memorialized in the platform, so we went ahead and included that last year. So as you can see, there are 10 points, the first being local control, and that would mean we would essentially oppose efforts that erode or remove the city's ability to set policy at the local level. Fiscal responsibility includes supporting protection of our existing resources and the authorities that provide revenue to the city, and to oppose any mandate that is unfunded or inadequately funded. Economic vibrancy includes promoting legislation that supports urban development, including encouragement of economic activity, transit-oriented development, and pedestrian and bike-friendly streets. An informed and engaged community, part of the platform, we would support legislation that allows the city to further its infrastructure in maintaining and enhancing the city's communication needs. Safe and healthy community includes supporting federal, state, and local assistance for public safety, enhancing local public safety, and opposing legislation that jeopardizes the overall safety of our community. Balanced quality housing, that is for all segments of our population. And legislation that provides fair and affordable housing is a priority, as is homelessness prevention and transition of homeless to permanent housing, and protecting our existing housing stock. As far as community services and facilities, we look at legislation that will help provide residents with safe, accessible services and facilities, and oppose action that depletes services and funding sources created to enhance our community's needs. Infrastructure and mobility, we would support legislation that increases funding for transportation, infrastructure, operation, and maintenance of the city, and support legislation that ensures that federal and state transportation planning funds are available. As far as arts and culture, we support legislation that helps maintain and enhance the city's performance art venues, funding for arts development, and oppose any reductions or eliminations of library programming. And sustainability, we support environmentally friendly legislation and urban sustainability. At this point, I'm going to invite David and Kira to join us. I don't know, Kira, are you gonna go ahead?
I think David's actually gonna start.
Okay, perfect.
Look, David. I was gonna start with the budget. That's okay.
Okay, no. Okay, well, I'm sorry. Then I'll just let you know, as you know, that the pandemic affected our state legislature. They went dark after their spring recess on March 20th. They were dark through April. The Assembly reconvened on May 4th. The State Senate convened on May 11th. The number of bills that you currently see in the session are a fraction of what we would normally have. The Assembly and Senate held significantly less Budget Committee hearings than in previous years. The Senate really limited themselves to just one or two or three bills per member. The Assembly passed a few more bills, so it'll be interesting as bills cross the opposite houses in the coming weeks, how those bills will be handled. And at this point, I will turn it over to Mr. Jones to give you an update on the budget.
Yes. Thank you, Christine, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for allowing us to be here. I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you kind of, we started this year with a $19 billion reserve and a $6 billion surplus. So we were about $25 billion to the good in January, and it took a month, ourselves, for a pandemic to flip that around. And now we found ourselves with an approximately $54 billion shortfall in the state per budget. What the legislature met their constitutional deadline to pass a budget was due on June 15th, and they did that yesterday, so that bill, SB 74, is in the process on the way to the governor's desk. Important to note, what the legislature did was not a negotiated compromise between the legislative leaders and the governor. So it was simply what the Democratic leadership in the Senate and the Senate and the Assembly agreed upon and sent to the governor. So they will continue negotiations. The fundamental difference in the approach was, they did much of what the governor proposed in the May revise, but fundamentally and philosophically, they differed with him greatly on what was called the trigger cuts. So the governor, in his May revise, had a $14 billion series of cuts, most of in K-14 education, $9 billion in K-14. He wanted those cuts, public health, education, and also a 10% cut across the board in state worker pay. So he wanted those cuts to take place beginning, on the beginning of the state's fiscal year, which is July 1, right around the corner. The legislature, when they looked at this, they decided they were not going to go in that direction, and they decided to put together their own series of trigger cuts, and they delayed the effective date until October 1st. And their basic philosophy was, these cuts are way too deep, and there is the possibility that the federal government will have yet another stimulus package. And they will be looking for direct relief for the state and local governments in that next package, and some of those cuts might not have to be made. So their cuts take place on, if the federal government does not provide, if Nancy Pelosi and company does not provide a relief package, those cuts will take place on October 1st. The legislature most likely will be looking at an additional budget. It is a very odd year, as Christine mentioned. A lot of the transparency was gone. The Capitol's been pretty much shut down for most of the in-person visits. But the federal government and the state government delayed the collection of income tax until the 15th of July, and it usually takes about a month for them to count that money up and figure out exactly how much money we got. So the budget that got passed and maybe tweaked in the coming weeks clearly is not going to be based on factual revenues. So factual revenues will show up for the state in probably the halfway through August. So we likely will be looking at revising this budget sometime in mid-August. The slide shows, I know that Glendale is keenly interested in affordable housing and housing, and the slide shows Glendale's potential share of the CARES Funding Act, between 2.08 million and 2.55 million, depending on negotiations between the governor and the Democratic leaders. The legislative package included the League of California Cities number, $500 million, with a $50,000 minimum allocation to every city. Glendale would do better under what the legislature did and the League proposed, so that's good. In addition, $550 million will be available to purchase, acquire, and rehab hotels, motels, or hostels for affordable housing under the Project Room Key. This is a big priority of the governor, and HCD will be assessing applications from local governments or others who want to operate these, buy these facilities and operate them. They will be, the units will be coveted, so you can't go for anything but affordable housing usage. So that is potentially helpful with RENA. HCD will be looking at applications for the $550 million, and they would judge them based on the applicant's ability to show how they would be able to address the ongoing operations and maintenance of the property. So that's gonna be the yardstick they'll use. The legislative package also includes $350 million to support existing homelessness programs via the Homeless Coordinating and Financing Council. Allocation and details of this have remained to be seen. We're expecting to see that maybe in one of the budget trailer bills. There are also $500 million, or $300 million in mortgage counseling and relief for people in trouble due to the COVID problem. So that's $300 million that would go for mortgage relief. It also includes $31 million for tenant legal assistance. Last, I'll go to, there's also important for us, I know we had, we've taken advantage of tax credit programs before. The January budget included a $500 million augmentation of the low and moderate income tax credit. That was retained. So there will be opportunities for our not-for-profit developers to partner with us to go after tax credits. So that's, that's good news for affordable housing. I know there's also interest in transportation programs, and due to the economic downturn in the, because of the crisis, the SB 1 gas tax revenues are estimated to be down by $1.8 billion. But the other news is that the SB 1 also included a CPI increase to the gas tax, so that adjustment under SB 1 will begin July 1st, and is expected to generate an additional $440 million per year. So a little bit of a haircut, or a big haircut, but a little bit of a recoup there. So with that, I think I'll turn it over to Kira to talk about housing, the housing package.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So as noted on the pack, or on the slide, the Senate proposed on May 20th a formal package of five bills plus a renter proposal. And each of the five bills of this package are currently in the Senate Appropriations Committee, which of course is chaired by Senator Portino, and will be taken up this Thursday as part of the Senate suspense calendar. They are all expected to get out of committee and will then be taken up for a vote on the Senate floor sometime next week. And I'll also note that we do expect that some of these will have some amendments, and we can talk about those and what that might mean. Christine, if you want to go to the next slide? Thank you. The package also includes, I'll just mention that the Senate Democratic Caucus full proposal includes the five bills plus a proposal for renter landlord stabilization that includes a three-party program, being the state, renter, and the landlord, to resolve unpaid rents over a limited period of time. There's currently no bill language on that proposal that has been introduced, but it may still come. The five pieces of legislation in the package are listed on the slide and include bills to allow housing in areas currently zoned for commercial, office, and retail space, lot splits, sequel relief for large housing projects, and smaller projects up to 10 units in priority areas, and expanding density bonus. Additionally, while the Senate has put together a formal package of bills, the Assembly also has bills on housing production that are moving through the process. The Assembly, however, does not at this time have a formal package. Once the legislature gets through their House of Origin deadlines this week and next week, and the bills cross over to the Second House, we anticipate staff will begin more formal discussions on the housing bills and what that might look like moving forward. And we'll just note, historically, the Senate, when they put together a significant package like this one, has done pretty well in terms of being the leaders and really pushing the ball forward. They spent some time earlier in the year with a task force of members that specifically began to look at housing production, and this all came out of the failure of SB 50. And so they really wanted to push something forward, and this is what came out of those discussions. And so we do anticipate that this package of bills will have... And so we do anticipate that this package of bills will have a pretty significant chance of getting to the governor, especially because several of the bills are actually authored by the Senate Pro Tem Atkins in San Diego. Christine, if you want to go to the next slide? We also wanted to highlight a couple of bills that we thought you might be interested in that are also moving forward at this time. And so the first one is SB 45. And unfortunately, this would be one of the bonds, it's environmental bonds. It proposes a 5.51 billion general obligation bond that potentially could be placed on the November 3rd general election. And the deadline to put something on the ballot this year is June 25th. Unfortunately, the governor, while he did propose something in his January budget, he removed it from the May revision. And since that time, both the Department of Finance and the governor have been pretty quiet on environmental measures going on the ballot this fall, and specifically on SB 45. And they have not, at this point, gotten the green light. There obviously will still be some push by the legislators to try to get something on the ballot in this area, but it's not looking like they've got a really good shot at them. On the flip side, SB 1441, which would repeal the sunset and make permanent the point-of-sale collection mechanisms for UUTs imposed on prepaid wireless services. And this is a pretty important bill for local agencies that collect UUT on prepaid wireless services as it will ensure the administration of the program is continued indefinitely. The bill is particularly critical in the wake of COVID-19 pandemic, as local governments grapple with budget shortfalls and look to preserve important revenue streams. This one did pass off the Senate floor last week and is now in the Second House, in the Assembly Rules Committee. And finally, SB 795, which is one of the only proposals to continue major investment into the immediate construction of affordable housing units and programs that address and prevent homelessness. This bill is on the Senate Appropriations Suspense Committee along with all the Senate Housing, the Senate Democratic Housing Package, which will all be up for a vote this Thursday. Christine, if you want to move on to the next slide? So given the failure of SB 50 back in January, legislative Democrats have been working to figure out alternative ways to spur housing production. There have been a number of bills, including the Senate Housing Package that we've just noted, and the two noted here, AB 2323 and SB 1299, that are intended to be tools for local governments as we work towards additional housing and meeting RENA goals. The lessons learned from why SB 50 was not successful include reducing local discretion and review have led to a number of new proposals that attempt to balance the ongoing need for new affordable and workforce housing while not overriding local discretion and environmental review. AB 2323 attempts to do this by allowing the community plan to provide the review of the project. And SB 1299, similar to SB 902 in the Senate Housing Package, provides an opt-in opportunity to rezone commercial sites for the development of workforce housing. In the case of SB 1299, in order to get the funds, a city will need to rezone the commercial site for workforce housing as a use-by right. And as noted, the use-by right under existing law would keep the project from being considered a project under CEQA. At this point, I was going to pass it back to Christine, because I think they wanted to have some direction on whether these tools to streamline housing development serve as good options, or if they're going too far and really get the take of the council.
So really, so at this point, just seeing, as Kira mentioned, that, you know, in a post-SB 50 world where we see that by right housing doesn't work for local cities, we're starting to see some loosening of CEQA to allow certain projects to go through. And at this point, we just wanted to check in with council and see if there is any feedback on this, if we just want to continue watching these kind of bills, if we want to support them, if we want to oppose them, and just get that specific bit of feedback from you, if that's something that the council wishes to provide.
And Mr. Najjar?
So the key, I mean, the key to all these bills, the common thread is the exemption of CEQA in return for greater and more intense use of the property. You know, and although I know CEQA can be a huge obstacle for some developments, I think we need to, you know, we need to keep it as a safety net or a safeguard for developments that would otherwise be affecting CEQA. And it says it would, and I'm not sure to what extent, there's different levels of CEQA, obviously. I'm not sure to what extent these bills would waive all the CEQA, but it says CEQA exemption permits, let's talk about our former colleague Laura Friedman's bill. It permits community plans to serve as the basis for a CEQA exemption of residential mixed-use and employment center projects near transit. So, I mean, there can be some very significant impacts that residential mixed-use and employment center projects can cause. You know, the fact that it's near transit may be a mitigation, but I'm just, I'm not comfortable giving the waivers or giving the exemptions in that manner. I mean, if there was a lesser standard of CEQA, or if there were some other things, but just to say it's exempt from CEQA, I think that, I think the neighbors and the residents would be very upset if we told them, sorry, no CEQA. They're going to build this, it'll block your light, there'll be vibrations, you know, all the list of categories, whatever, the 11 or 15 categories that CEQA goes through would be, you know, traffic, historical resources, I mean, including historical resources. We know that we're very sensitive to that on this council. So I want to tear down an old house and put in a larger apartment building, but because it's near transit, there's no CEQA. So I'm a little bit hesitant, and that might be an extreme example, but that's what's coming to mind at this point.
Is there any other comment?
I, I, I'll make a comment. Yes, I have a question for staff. How many, just a rough estimate, if you can, of how many times we have ordered or mandated or asked for a CEQA review? I mean, a complete CEQA review of development? A lot? Are there a lot of them?
I think Mr. Landsafam-
CEQA is, CEQA is for environmental. It's for traffic and noise, it's air quality. Do you have a ballpark figure? Has it been a big number? I mean, we have, the DSP has already, has already been zoned, and they've gone through CEQA. So I don't know what we would have done, or how many we've asked for in that area. I'm concerned about the rezoning, that those, anytime we're rezoning, we're going to, we should have, we should, we necessitate CEQA. If we're building your residential, we need CEQA. If we're building a complete affordable housing unit, you know, I'm okay with eliminating CEQA. If it's all for, because that's what we're after. I think we have to solve the problem without, without doing away with the process. So, you know, everybody knows we need more housing, and that's what we need to, we need to concentrate on. So that's where my, my issue lies, in the, how many we've done. If we've, if we've had to go through CEQA for many times, then maybe we need it. If we haven't, then I think we can lighten up on the demand and find a, you know, a happy medium somewhere, a compromise. Thank you.
So as I understand it, for our downtown area, it was covered by the plant, the project CEQA. There was one CEQA done for the entire downtown area. So an individual project that came in would not have to go through CEQA. But this would be for other areas outside project areas. Am I correct on that?
In a manner of speaking of the big picture, that's true. There was a program EIR prepared for the downtown-specific plan. And under that EIR, a number of impact areas were looked at. If the, if the project, the entire project area of the downtown was built out, what would be the impacts? But then from there, each time a project would come in that required discretionary review, and it's every project because it requires designer review, then the staff would have to look at, what are, are there any impacts that were not specifically analyzed for that, for the specific project that we need to look at, and whether, from there you can do, so that's basically called tiering. So then from there, they could look at it and say, it would be exempt. And there actually are exemptions for projects that are consistent with specific plans. There used to be an old exemption for projects that were consistent with redevelopment plans. And actually, I think Assemblymember Friedman's bill is expanding that, one of those exemptions to, to the current exemption for specific plans to also have it apply to community plans. I think that's, I think that's how it's supposed to work. So then, from there, you would look at, are there impact areas that were not, we didn't have enough detail at the time to analyze in the DSP IR, so we were required to do some additional analysis. Sometimes that would be a negative declaration, an MND. A couple of times, it would be a full EIR or focused EIR, because it might require some additional analysis. It just depend, and that's one of the things, the city's choices are somewhat limited. We can't just decide we're going to do a neg deck here because it's, it seems easy, or we require an EIR here because it's controversial. We have to do it based on what evidence is in the record for the particular project. Certainly as we've gone over time through downtown-specific plan EIR, in some cases, some data points were stale and needed to be updated. Other cases, they were still relevant and could be used for the purposes of tiering. So that's kind of, that's kind of how the concept works. And the EIR for, certainly for the downtown was able to be utilized to look at the significant impacts or lack thereof for future individual projects. But I can tell you, sometimes those documents, those tiering documents were very lengthy, even though ultimately the project would be determined to be exempt or subject only to negative declaration.
I think, this Phil Landsafam, I think one of the things to remember is every project has some level of CEQA review. Even if it's just an initial study that determines there are no impacts, you may look at it, you may look at your initial study and say, you know what, it falls under one of the categories of exemption. But all of our projects have some level of environmental review. And as Mr. Garcia said, we may do a master EIR, and that's where some of these programs are looking at, that the one, Assemblymember Friedman's, do a community plan at a project level, and then let people go build to that plan. So it, to answer your question, literally, Ms. Devine, every project has environmental review. It's just really what level of review.
Okay. One question, maybe Mr. City Attorney and Phil Landsafam or City Manager. Okay, on the project, affordable housing project on Sonora, how have the CEQA affected that? If, let's say, CEQA would be eliminated on that project, EIR, all those, how fast the project would be built?
Bill, do you remember what the environmental was on that project? Because, you know, there are-
I mean, I'm trying to understand how it impacts the project.
Again, it'll depend on the type of environmental review that's required. So if it's exempt-
Okay, we have an example of that project.
Right. And it's, but what I'm trying to say, it depends on the level of review that's required. So if it was exempt, and there are exemptions, for example, for projects that are 100% affordable, there are exemptions for what are called urban infill projects, which are a lot of, a lot of projects in Glendale can qualify for. Sometimes they don't, but, but they're at least, that initially, we look at that because there's some applicability there. But if it required some environmental review, especially if it required an MND or an EIR, then it's going to, it will lengthen the process because you're talking about more work, obviously, for the staff, and if there's a consultant involved. And then there's public review, public comment that we have to, we have to undertake as part of that. And so, you know, the, if the MND, it's, you know, certain 20 days, and I think it's 30 days for EIR, 45 days if it's, if it's got some regional issues. So I can't answer the specific question without remembering specifically.
Approximately. How impacted that project? I'm not looking for exact day, what we are talking about. It's few months? Year?
Again, I-
10 days?
Yeah. Phil, do you have a sense?
Mr. Mayor, I think the difficulty we're both having is, we can't remember exactly what was used. I believe it was a, an infill exemption. So we did some review and an initial study to see, are there any impacts? No, there are not. And so we determined that it has this exemption. That would take maybe two months to do all of the research and then fold that into the agreements that we had. If we discovered that there were impacts and you had to do an environmental impact review, a full study, that could be anywhere from six to eight to 12 months, depending on the size of the project. Now, housing projects are typically 130 to 200 units so that they can qualify for tax credits. So you don't have one of those monster, you know, Glendale Galleria Americana, where you've got a 12 or 18-month review process. But it might be six to eight months to do that EIR, and then go through all of your reviews, your community reviews.
Thank you. Okay. Is there any more questions? Apparently no. So we want to continue?
Yeah, we have more. So this was just to pause and get this initial feedback, and then we can continue going through. So you have before you an updated list of the bills. We went ahead and bolded anything that action has been taken on in the last 10 days since the report was initially drafted. And then anything that's dead has been, is a strike through. It's a Excel sheet that's a second, secondary to what you have, and it's also posted online for those who are following along. But, so if there's any feedback you have on bills, we can take that. But just to finish up the presentation, there is one piece of federal legislation that we just wanted to bring to your attention, and that is HR 6011. It's not working. There we go. Okay. Oh. So this is the Affordable and Homeless Housing Incentive Act of 2020, and it was introduced by Congressman Adam Schiff on February 27. It provides an incentive to property owners by allowing non-recognition of gain for income tax purposes when they sell to nonprofits and government agencies, and the goal is to increase the stock of affordable housing. And if this sounds familiar to any of you, it's because this bill is the final leg of the Affordable Housing Legislative Strategy that was put into place by the Glendale Housing Authority two years ago. If you recall, there were four proposals, three of which were state-level proposals that made their way through the legislative process last year. Two of those made it to the governor's desk of the state proposals. One was signed into law. And the fourth legislative and the final legislative strategy is this federal proposal that was presented to Congressman Schiff's office last year, and he decided to sponsor the bill. He enhanced it a little bit based on outreach and feedback he received from other agencies. And the congressman has local consensus on this bill with housing providers in his district. Our staff is working with the congressman's staff to make other housing authorities aware of the bill, and asking that, they ask their local representatives to support it. We're working through the California Housing Authority, as well as our Federal Housing Authority contacts and associations, to push information about this bill out nationwide to congressional representatives for support. So this bill would essentially allow us to do two things. Go to properties that are on the market right now and let the sellers know that there is this incentive, that they have three years to defer investment. They have, they get some tax breaks. And the other strategy is to go to properties that aren't for sale and to let them know that, you know, if you are to sell this property here, some of the things for you to consider. So those are two strategies that we could use should this bill pass. At this point, it's probably not moving anytime soon. It was just introduced, so we'll see where it goes, and we'll continue monitoring it. But just wanted to provide an update to council that your final leg of the legislative strategy came to fruition. That concludes the presentation.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I just have a question on this. One second.
We should have thanked Congress for giving us this.
On this current bill list?
Yes, sir.
Some of them are crossed off. Means the bill has been pulled?
It's dead. It got stuck in suspense appropriations. It's just not moving at this point. It's not going, it's not able to be considered. It didn't pass its certain committee or meet certain deadlines. It didn't pass its certain committee or meet certain deadlines. And so it is no longer available for consideration. So we just did that, so you could.
But there are lots of them has been pulled, basically. Am I right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Very few left. After they, spending that much time, it's all.
Because of COVID, a lot of them got killed.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, we do have a caller online.
Okay, we have a caller. One second, we go to the caller first. You are on the air with City Council members, mayor and staff.
Yes, hello, John Mayor and members of council and staff. This is one of your audit committee members, Tom O'Shaughnessy. Given that the governor's emphasis and the leadership have agreed is that we only look at fire suppression, homelessness and COVID-19 impact. Are there a set of bills that are being watched that so in case the state controller tells us we have more funds coming up on October, that they may be put back in and deactivated? That's my question.
Thank you. Who will answer the question? Or if he can, we can answer next week or week after?
I mean, there is a number of COVID-related bills that we're watching that are on the list. And any funding that comes up through the budget process, we'll be monitoring. Our lobbyists will be monitoring and we'll.
Was that satisfactory answer? I guess our caller is not there. Thank you for the question. Okay, we'll consider it. Okay. Mr. Brock.
I think a comment. So, let's see, I have a couple of things. One, I want to have a question on SB 1299, which is Portantino's bill. I, I'm reading this description here, and it's different from what I. My impression with this was that it had something to do with us being guaranteed a certain flow of sales tax revenue in the event that.
True.
A retail space gets converted into affordable housing. So let's take, you know, Sears, for example, if that were to become an affordable housing project, you know, we would not take the hit of losing all that sales tax revenue for something like seven years. We would be, that would, but that's not what it says here, is that?
Which page are you?
Is it 1299 or am I thinking of the wrong bill?
I think.
That's correct.
SB 1299, because the description here just talks about, it mentions when you rezone a site used for a big box retailer, commercial shopping center. It just talks about SEQA here, but it doesn't talk about, I thought the whole gist of that was about sales tax revenue. Being kind of, us being protected for some period of time.
Yes, Councilmember Brockman, to answer your question. So there would be funding that would offset the loss of sales tax revenue. Here, we're highlighting the, I guess, what you give up in exchange for that. So it's optional, you rezone, and then you get the funding, but you do waive certain exemptions. And if David or Kira have anything to add to that, be happy to.
I would just back up what Christine said. She's totally correct. The part that you're talking about would be with the backfill of the property tax, backfill of the sales tax dollars, is actually the grant part. The bill requires HCV to provide optional grants, and that, the money in the grant is that money that you're referring to. Once you agree to take the grant, that's what we're, that's what this description is talking about, the second part of the bill.
So I was only talking, I was only looking at the good side of that. But now, are we, do we have a position on this bill?
So staff had conservatively, Councilmember Brockman, put that as support if amended. So the concept of it is supported, but again, not knowing where council stood on the waiver of those SEQA exemptions. Right now, it's penciled, and we haven't sent off a formal letter to the Senate yet. Wanted to check in with council and see if you agree with that support if amended, if it should be changed to support, or if we should just watch it.
So, okay, so what we would be, if we take that grant, then we are rezoning, right? I mean, that would be our obligation to rezone, and also, the project would not go through any SEQA review.
That's my understanding, yes.
I mean, it still seems like a pretty good deal to me, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Landsafame.
Yes, just to manage expectations, because I know you mentioned the Sears site. The Sears site is currently zoned for housing. Don't think that you could use this program for that. Something like in another city, Costco, just across the border. Let's say that people stopped shopping there, that's zoned for commercial. You would be able to use this program and say, I will rezone it for housing and allow housing there, and then you get your grant.
I see.
So why you don't bring the example of Home Depot?
Yeah, Home Depot.
Why you go to?
But I, I mean, I like this concept. I would support this. I don't know what the if amended, you know, what would possibly be amended. But I don't know how the rest of you feel, but I would support this.
Yeah. Okay. Is there any comment?
No, I mean, it's just, we're sort of flipped on this. Usually, it's the Republican conservatives who want to waive the SEQA requirements. And things are a little bit flipped, I guess, both in Sacramento and in Glendale.
Yeah. I have more, oh, I had.
Yeah, okay.
You can come back to me, I had two other.
Mr. Kasakian.
No, it's all right, I'll let Councilmember Brockman finish.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I agree with you. I mean, I have mixed feelings about SEQA because it's sometimes weaponized to, you know. I mean, that's the really negative kind of situations, when it's weaponized to stop something that really is beneficial to the community, but also, it just slows down projects. And so, you know, when there's small SEQA exemptions that are really targeted towards affordable housing, I think that's acceptable. When there's something that's broader, that could threaten the whole basis of SEQA, you know, then I definitely have a lot of concern. But I, I'm with you. I mean, it's a tough one, and SEQA's been good. It gets beaten up a lot, and I think it, you know, we do need to protect it generally, although I can see carve-outs. And, you know, carve-outs are made for sports stadiums and things like that. I think affordable housing is a better thing to carve out. But anyway, I was just going to mention two other things. One is SB 45, which I know you, we heard, you know, it's now in the assembly. This is the climate resiliency bill, and it's $5.5 billion. And one thing I like about that is the way it was structured, is that the money is, gets, flows through through local agencies. So it's not as if it's just, you know, kind of allocated out of Sacramento. It goes through, in our case, Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy. And we now have our ex-city council member on the advisory board. But anyway, I would support that. I don't know if it's going to get anywhere, but for what it's worth, I would definitely want to support it. Not just because it's Senator Portantino's bill, but I think it's money that, you know, we could definitely use because we are in a high, you know, fire risk zone, and it would be something we could use for, you know, wildfire prevention. I know it covers flood prevention, safe drinking water, drought preparation preparedness, a lot of important things. So I like that. And then, I would also like us to put AB 1080 and SB 54 on our list. These are companion bills that address plastic pollution. And the name of it is the California Circular Economy and Plastic Pollution Reduction Act. What it does is it puts responsibility on manufacturers to design products that are reusable and recyclable, to use more recycled content in their products. This is good for cities. I mean, this is good for us dealing with our own waste issues. And I did look it up, and I saw that California, the League of California Cities, LA, Culver City, Long Beach, Pasadena, Torrance have all supported this bill. So I didn't see it on our list, and I would like to have it on there and support that package. And it does look like it's moving through the legislature, and I think has a pretty good chance.
Thank you. Mr. Kasakian.
So, I mean, generally, it's just the way a lot of these one-size-fits-all solutions have been coming up in Sacramento regarding the housing crisis. It's, I have concerns about them, and particularly when they start meddling with SEQA, which has had its share of issues, but I think I would agree with Councilmember Najarian on these particular issues. In addition to the ones that were mentioned here, I was wondering if there was, if we could add another bill, another Senator Weiner bill to the list to track, and that's SB, I think it's 899, if I'm not mistaken. And that's one that allows nonprofits, churches, schools to build by right on their properties, housing. Which again, it's, the intention is good, the intent is good, but I think that, you know, superseding any type of local authority, I have generally issues with. You know, ultimately, I don't know where, I haven't been keeping track of where everyone stands on this, but in terms of meddling with, potentially with SEQA, even though I think some of the bills have good intentions behind them. I'm not really interested in visiting that.
Just to clarify, Councilmember Kasakian, would you like us just to mark that as a watch?
I would.
And just track it? Okay, thank you.
Along with SB 899. And then there was a couple of others. AB 2707, which was a Holden bill about the local government finance, this credit facility for coronavirus, which I thought was an interesting concept. I was wondering if, you know, I noticed that it came off the list, and I don't know what the ultimate fate of this bill has been, but I was wondering if there's anything that has taken its place. Is there another bill that does something more? Because it certainly was an interesting bill, allowing local agencies to borrow monies from the state.
Not sure about that. I don't know if David or Kira have any, is there any sort of companion bill on the Senate side or any talk about that being replaced in the budget?
Yeah, there's not a companion bill at this point. Unfortunately, Assemblymember Holden got that bill drafted to the committee about a day or two late, and so it never got heard. That said, it wouldn't surprise me at all, as we get into the second house, if the language in that bill, because it is a really good bill, would get gotten amended into another bill or move some in some other way. So I wouldn't say, you know, that bill is dead for now because it can't move because of deadlines, but there's lots of ways to move ideas through the legislature.
Yeah, that's, those are my thoughts for now. I mean, there's, besides that, there was a few others that, you know, fortunately, good ideas. I'm not sure what the politics is behind some of them coming off. But I know that the legislature also has a lot on its plate right now, given the kind of urgency of the moment with the COVID crisis and others. So, you know, we wait and see what happens with some of these. And I know that some of them are coming up, at least in the Senate appropriations. I believe on Thursday, there's a number of them that'll be considered. So we'll see how many live and how many more die. Thank you. Thank you for your presentations.
Thank you. Okay.
Any more questions?
Now you have your direction?
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you. So.
Yes, I believe so. So what I'm understanding is that we're.
Watch.
We're just going to watch it all. We're not going to oppose, and we're not going to support at this time, but we will just watch.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We are done with this item.
Do you need a motion to note and file, subject to the comments?
I'll move to note and file, subject to the comments.
Second?
Okay. There's second?
Second.
Do I have second? Yeah.
Second.
All right, thank you. Do we need the roll call? Roll call.
Councilmember Brockman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. What's next?
Glendale Water and Power Purchase Order Agreement with ENM Electric and Machinery Incorporated DBA Wonderware California for procurement of additional licenses of Wonderware Water SCADA HAMI software. One, resolution dispensing with competitive bidding and authorizing the purchasing administrator to execute a purchase order agreement with ENM Electric and Machinery Incorporated DBA Wonderware California for the procurement of additional licenses of Wonderware Water SCADA HAMI software system, one-year maintenance support services for not to exceed amount of $179,920, and authorize the renewal of the annual maintenance and technical support services for the life of the Wonderware software.
Ms. Yasmin Beers?
Yes.
But before I go to you, do I have a motion to move this item without going through discussion, going through this? Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Okay. Roll call. Thank you, Ms. Mr. Zern, thank you.
We never mind.
Councilmember Brockman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kasakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Thank you. Yes. Okay, what's next?
Next item would be 8C, Community Services in Parks Regarding Duque majin Park Nature Education Center, Phase Four, Part Three, Resolution Dispensing with Competitive Biddings and Authorizing the Purchasing Administrator or Designing to Issue a Purchase Order Service Authorization in the Amount of $554,097, $554,097 to Ralph Hudson Incorporated DBA Ironworth for Materials Fabrication and Installation of Interpretive Design Elements for the Stone Barn Nature Center and Adding a Reserve for Contingencies for this project of $55,410 or approximately 10% for the total contract not to exceed amount of $609,507.72.
Ms. Yasmin Beers?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, we're going to go directly to Mr. Bulanikian, and I'm not sure where he actually went. We do have a presentation that is. Mr. Bulanikian, there's only so much dancing I can do without actually standing up and dancing.
The other item will take some time to ratify or pass it.
Mayor, before we start the presentation, there's a part two I need to read the motion on.
Oh, please.
Two would be motion to amend existing contract with Gwyn Pug Urban Studio Incorporated, contract number C10639, to add construction assistant phase and interpretive element fabrication and installation management services to the contract for the amount of $210,850 for total contract not to exceed amount of $578,825.
Thank you. Mr. Bulanikian or?
Mr. Bulanikian is fine, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Agajanian, members of the council, my apologies for stepping out. Basically, Duque majin Wilderness Park, it's a 709-acre park with four and a half miles of trails, a few picnic shelters and a nice open grass meadow. I would like to talk about past phases, projects that have been completed, which started 25 years ago. Phase one. Phase one was the historical assessment and structural analysis. Phase two, the hiking trail design and construction of four and a half miles of trails within the park. Phase three was park center area construction, which included the entry road, parking lots, picnic shelters, restrooms and amphitheater. Phase four, part one, was the seismic upgrades and plumbing and safety improvements that was completed in 2011. Phase four, part two, was completed in 2018. This was the mechanical systems, the HVAC, plumbing, electrical, concrete floor slab and glass storefront entry and ADA improvements. This was all, this all was completed in the interior of the building. The current phase, phase four, part three, we're in the design process of the interpretive center and also a new restroom building right next to the nature education center or the barn. The new, this phase would include the interior improvements, displays, exhibits, audiovisual equipment, new restroom facilities, signage around the building, ADA accessibility. The master planning, the master plan of this phase was approved by council December 5th of 2017. It also included conceptual design for possible future uses, an overflow parking lot, expanding the patio, the south patio expansion, a wilderness-themed playground concession, and also a second-floor meeting room where the restroom building is. also a second-floor meeting room where the restroom building is. The interpretive theme and goals of the Nature Education Center, we're going to have a few concepts, which we'll talk about, the continent, climate, ecology, topography, wilderness, all of the animals that live in the park and surrounding community up in the San Rafael Mountains, Verdugo Mountains, and also the historical contributions of that facility during the 1900s and mid-1900s. The Nature Education Center, future programming, once when the facility and the nature education facility is built, we would like to partner with GUST and other private schools in the area, so they can put nature education in their curriculum. The facility would be open to field trips, instead of GUST schools and private schools in Glendale, visiting Vasquez Rock or Stone Nature Education Center in Burbank, they can visit our nature education center. We would work with Glendale Parks and Open Space Foundation, and develop a nature education summer day camp program. We would expand our Glendale outdoors program that we have, we bus kids from the South Glendale area, from Pacific Community Center, four times a year. We take them up to Duke Magin Park. We have a interpretive hike, some educational material, and basically arts and crafts. It's a half-day program, four times a year. We'll expand that to eight to 12 times a year, once when the nature center is built. The nature center will also include, we'll have the facility available for personal events. We're getting a number of calls, we receive a number of calls for weddings, baptisms, quinceañeras. We'll have the facility available for private events and special events, board retreats, and so on. The budget history, since the city had purchased the facility, so far, phase one, two, and three, we've spent $6.8 million. Phase four, which was a seismic upgrade, we've spent $1,425,000. And phase four, part two and three, which we're currently in, is about $3 million. We currently have $1.6 million for both the nature center, nature education center, and also the new restroom building. I'll go and talk about the exhibit. I know we have both our consultants, we have Gwyn Pugh, our architect, and Mr. Thomas Hartman from IQ Magic. Once we're not make the presentation, and they'll be available to answer any questions in regards to the nature education component of the project. The next slide is basically what the nature education center will look like. This is the inside of the building. We'll have our exhibits, our mobile exhibits, all placed around the facility. We'll have pre-recorded media images and TVs around the facility that will talk about land and fire, earthquakes, ecology, and so on. We'll have banners that will talk about climate, wildlife, the history of the barn, and the history of the La Mesa family, which built the barn back in 1906. All these exhibits that are, that will be placed in the interior of the building will be mobile, as I mentioned earlier. We'll have staff put them away on one side of the facility, and open up the facility for events, such as weddings, baptisms, quinceañeras, and meetings. Here's another example of one of our media slides that we'll have, where mountains meet the sea. We'll have another slide that will talk about the landscape, wildfires and wildfire prevention, and how we can prevent wildfires in our foothill communities. Where people and nature connect, we'll have exhibits that will show the types of animals that live in our hills and our mountains, whether it be mountain lions, cougars, bears, and so on. We'll also have a work area for children in the lower level of the center. If you have visited KidSpace Museum in Pasadena, they have a little work area for kids to play with rocks, insects, and basically, you know, work on arts and crafts. We want to have a similar workstation for the children. And we will also, the same lower level, one side will be for education purposes, and another, the other side of the lower level will talk about people and the Stone Barn Conservancy, a wine conservancy, will have educational material set up, and talk about the history of the barn. This is what the lower level will look like, with the workspace for children to be creative with their activities. The current status of the project, we do have, the restroom bid documents are in plan check. We will return to council in the next month or so, or two months, for approval of the specifications of the restroom, and request authorizing to go out to bid. The interpretive work is very specialized, so we are asking council to have the architect and interpretive designer work with the fabricator to fabricate and install the educational exhibits in the interior of the barn. So our interpretive consultant, IQ Magic, a few months ago issued requests for proposals to four highly qualified exhibit fabricators, and after consulting with IQ Magic, staff would like to go with Ironwood. They're a company that have, that has worked on a number of interpretive exhibits throughout Southern California. They worked on the Getty, Gene Autry Museum, Mocha, LACMA, and we would like to ask council to dispense with competitive bidding, and go with Ironwood as our fabricator. If there are any questions?
Yes.
Yes.
I have a question. I remember this in 1980s, they bought this park for five million, over $5 million, right?
Yes.
And from that time until now, do you know how much money did we put in this park?
So, so far, we have put in a little over $10 million.
Go to that slide.
Sure.
$10 million?
So...
Then, okay.
Yes, the phase one, two, and three were $6.8 million. Phase four, part one, was 1.4, which was a seismic upgrade. Phase four, part two and three, about $3 million. We currently have $1.6 million left for both the restroom and the nature education center.
I have to say, I'm glad that we had four proposals. Usually it comes with one and two. This is a major improvement, you know, that we have four proposals, I'm happy with it. Thank you. So is there any question from Mr. Bulanikian, or staff?
I'd just like to make a comment.
Mr... Yes, Kasakian?
First of all, thank you for the presentation. I'm glad to see this finally being completed. I've been to the Stowe Canyon Nature Center a number of times with my family, and I think it's great, and it would be fantastic to have something similar in Glendale. My comment would be that, I know that, for the purpose of maximizing the utility of the, of the building, we need to make the exhibits modular and have them easily moved around, but, so that they don't look too modular, like I, no visible wheels, so when it is a nature center, it looks like a bona fide, something that, you know, we know that young kids are going to touch, and crawl, and climb all over things, that it has that ability, that durability, and it's made with good quality materials, whatever it may be, because this is something we'll be leaving for future generations, and we're going to be bringing kids up from all over the city to experience what treasures we have in our mountains, and in our open space. So that would be one of the, and it goes without saying, I know, but I just want to reiterate it.
Mayor Agajanian, Councilmember Kasakian, I do have Tom Hartman, who's our consultant. If you have any questions regarding the exhibit and the durability, he'll be more than happy to answer. It will be durable. We're very excited that this project is moving forward, and, I don't know, Tom, are you on?
It's really fine. I, I don't have, I don't need to know the details, I don't need to know the materials, I just want to express my sentiment, and I trust staff knows better than I ever could tell you as to how to, you know, actualize that vision, so that it, again, you know, people are going to be climbing over it, and obviously, with it moving around quite a bit, if we do end up using it for things, that's also going to add to the wear and tear of it. And I like the way it incorporates the local history of the barn as well. My only request is, please get it done, get it done soon, and let's make sure that the hours of operation are such that, you know, the community can actually benefit from it, and it's not just, you know, between the hours of 1:30 and 2:30 on Wednesdays and every other Thursday or something, you know, let's make it something that people will, can plan into their weekend activities, to be able to go and visit, and then enjoy the open space around it.
Thank you, Mr. Brot.
Quick comment, yeah, I also want to thank you, and say, I love Duke Magin Park, I like to go there and hike, and it's a great space, and I'm glad we're doing this, I'm glad we're using a local Glendale contractor, which is nice when we can do that. And the only thing is, obviously, it's, it's far away from where, you know, a lot of our population is, it's hard to get to, and anything we can do to just make it more accessible, and I don't know what that is, I mentioned, you know, in the briefing here, that, you know, if there's any kind of service we could have on weekends to get families up there, that would be fantastic. I know you bring the school groups up, and I, and I was talking to, oh, Kate Everly on our Parks Commission said, you know, a lot of the kids have never gone hiking, you know, they go up there, and it's their first time ever hiking, so, like, what can we do to just get more kids up there, and families, not just, not just through the schools, but, but families that, some cases, you know, they may not have a car, they just can't get there otherwise, so.
That's a very true statement. Is there any other comment?
I have a, I have a question, and...
Ms. Devine?
I guess of the designers, the architects, the, I, is there modular seating in there? How many TVs are there, where you will have films or documentary information?
We have about eight programs that exist inside the center, and they're staggered programs, they get activated by people, so you can, you can listen to bird calls, listen to animal calls, there's a major presentation on fire and dramatic park landscape, geology of earthquakes and the fire, there's one big program, some few big programs, and a number of small programs.
Okay. Do you have seating facilities, modular seating of any kind, so that parents, or even kids might want to sit and, and watch, or is it all standing and walking?
Yeah, right now, it's, it's standing, reading the provisions to purchase some furniture that can be moved around, because we realize, we move these, when we move these with, for events, and then put them back. We didn't want to do something that was fixed in there, so we, so we have, we have storage and some provision for the seating, but we haven't already identified what that is yet.
Okay, and, and you'll have a film of some sort on the, the history of the barn, and the parks and open space, how they contributed to the project, and there'll be information like that?
Yes.
Great, thank you, and O'Nag, in your department, I know this has been a long process, that we're finally coming to the end, and it's going to be fabulous and wonderful, and I am particularly intrigued with the wilderness-themed playground. Is that going to be like animals, or, I mean, I just, I'm trying to imagine that in my mind?
Mayor Agajanian, members of the council, Councilmember Devine, the wilderness-themed playground was part of the conceptual plan. We do not have funds for all the items that were part of the conceptual plan, such as the expansion of the south patio, the playground, the overflow parking lot. We are looking into Measure A funds and Prop 68 funds for both this expansion of the south patio and the playground. If we were to receive funds, we will come back to council for approval to construct the playground and expand the south patio.
How much do you need? How much, how much funding do you need?
The expansion of the south patio is around $450,000. The playground, the playground is between $380 to $425.
You need about a million dollars. Okay, well, good luck, I hope, so what's that, step five? Thank you, O'Nag.
We'll get there.
Thank you.
All good.
Is there, okay, is there a motion?
I'll move the item.
Mayor, there is a caller up for this item.
We have a caller, I'm sorry. You are on the air with Mayor, City Councilmembers, and the staff.
Mayor Agajanian, members of the City Council, my name is Herbert Mulano. I am a frequent hiker, and I have gone very, very often to Duke Magin Wilderness Park, and as a regional park, I think it is a good idea that this thing is being developed. But what I want to bring to your attention is something very significant, and that is that $1,111,000 are coming from the development impact fees. And you all know that the development that is taking place, is taking place in South Glendale. So if you were to take recreational planning area 10, that has 32,000 people, it only has 0.017 acres, in total, per thousand people. In other words, we have the areas that are most impacted by development, being significantly short-changed when it comes to park development. And it's something that you guys need to take into account, because if you're only going to have a bus that comes around 12 times a year to take the kids from South Glendale into this area, in reality, this park is not serving the needs of the communities that are being impacted by the high development. And I'm thinking about the concept of fairness and equity, right, and democracy. You are being elected primarily by the neighborhoods that are single-family owned, that's where most of the votes get, and the areas where the most dense, they have a very low turnover rate, but still, you represent all of Glendale. What I want to make you aware is that in many of these park developments that are taking place throughout Glendale, the areas that are mostly in need, that have been identified by the quality of life indicators, documents that are on your own website, that indicate the shortage and the need, they're not addressed. And that's why I think that when a budget is being developed, you need to take a look at the quality of life indicators to figure out what the needs are for the communities. So $1,111,000 of park and library impact fees, that impact the most for those new residents will be living, are not being directed, and that's my contention, that money is not being directed to the neighborhoods that are mostly impacted by the development, and it is something that the council should take into account. Maybe we need a program that will bring in, you know, 52 trips a year from South Glendale, and we need to document how many of the children of the residents of those areas that are heavily impacted by the additional density are benefiting from these programs. So it is great that you have this fabulous facilities, right, but the individuals who are being impacted, and the individuals who need it the most, the populations, I don't think are being addressed adequately, and I think that is something that the council should bring back for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Mayor?
I actually, I agree with Mr. Mulano. Every time I go to this park, something bothers me is that mostly those who are visiting the park are not basically from Glendale. Mostly they are, whether the east of our park, or the west, that they come to that park. And... Mostly they are whether the east of our park or the west that they come to that park. And I was thinking maybe, maybe we have to have buses from South Glendale that for free, they will pick up, especially in a summer, is in front of us, or it's already summer. So they will pick up the kids, I mean, after we finish with this COVID-19 or wherever, whatever we have to arrange. I'm talking in general, that we have to have free buses, that it will say on certain hours, the bus will take anybody who wants to visit that park, to take them to the park and later to bring them back, or to do it on a regular basis, like every hour to go up and come down the next hour. Because I don't see that we are utilizing or we are using this park that much. That's my observation. Maybe I'm wrong. Maybe I go at a time that there are nobody in there, but I don't believe it that there are lots of visitors in there from Glendale. And whoever I talk to is somehow they come from somewhere else. That's my observation, anyway.
Mr. Mayor and Council?
Mayor?
Please, Councilwoman Devine, go ahead.
Well, I, I agree with you, Mayor. I agree wholeheartedly. And, you know, that's why we set up that funding, the Measure S funding was especially designated for parks, a park hopefully in South Glendale. And if we can find a property and maybe in the not-too-distant future, use the Measure S funding to get a park in South Glendale, that's the council's wish for the use of that Measure S funding. So I agree with you and I agree with Mr. Mulano. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I think that, yeah, Mr. Mulano brings up very good and valid points. I think, I'm glad he brings them up because it should be something that we remind ourselves when we expend funds in this amount. But I think that part of the reason why we haven't made, perhaps seen as much traffic up there, foot traffic, is because this, this building has been this kind of empty shell for so long. I mean, what is the attraction other than to walk on the trails? And certainly, trails have their own kind of mystique and draw. But I'll tell you, as a parent, as a parent of a young child, every weekend, we're struggling to find things to do with our families around the city and, and in the neighboring areas. And we'll drive all the way down to the Natural History Museum, you know, I believe it was Kids Space that was mentioned in Pasadena. And all these things cost money. They all cost money. You're going to have to either buy a membership or you're going to have to buy tickets. Here we have something, right here, that we could have for our families in the city that will be free, that'll be educational, that'll be informative. I know how impactful it was when I was a young child, that when my parents would pack us into the car and drive us to the national parks, to Kings Canyon, to Sequoia. And here we have a beautiful natural setting right in our backyard. And I do agree with you, we should make sure that a number of people who do not live nearby can access them, kids from the southern, most densest parts of the city. Because I think exposure to nature will hopefully make these kids into good stewards of the environment for decades to come, knowing what we have here in the city. So let's do this. Let's, I know that, it should not be an either/or. We should do this and we should do things in South Glendale.
I'm good.
Just a few comments. We have had this discussion, very vigorous discussion, bordering on the lines of strong arguments, perhaps two, three years ago with Councilmember Sinanian. The issue was, as Mr. Mulano restated, that the CI, the, the development impact fees are being generated from the central part of the city with the intent that parks would be created in that location to serve those residents. That being said, we got into Duke Magin. I think we have, we have to go this far to complete the basic functional design and use of it. Am I interested in adding more money to that? Perhaps it would be time to take a break after this round of funding and assess some locations in South Glendale. And that's just, I just want to.
I agree with that assessment. I mean, that we have to, if we have money to spend on South Glendale. And I don't know, I want to ask our city manager or city attorney, is there any way, like at least for four months, if it's not this year, for the next year, four months, starting July until kids, they go to school, that to have a bus going up there and an hour later bring the public to South, wherever, I mean, different locations? Is that possible?
There's always possibilities in terms of the utilization of, of our beeline buses and appropriate routes that can be established. Comes with a cost associated with it for the city to be able to provide such a service. We would have to look to see what that cost is and provide that information to council and get an appropriation for that and for our ability to be able to do that. So we will absolutely look at that. We can bring information to the city council and if interested, we can implement it. Outside of what you brought up, Mr. Mayor, in terms of the importance of providing access to the parks, Mr. Bulanikian could cover some of the programming that will be associated with the barn once it is completed and, and open to the public. So if you can cover that piece of it, Mr. Bulanikian.
Sure. Thank you. Mayor Agajanian, members of the council, like I mentioned in my presentation, we'll be working with Glendale Unified on curriculum for their school, for their students. But we would like to, once when the facility is built, we would like to operate it, if all goes well, you know, six to seven days a week, Monday through Friday, after school, 3 o'clock till about 6, 7, Saturdays and Sundays, the entire day, we would have it open for drop-in programming. We will have docents. We have a number of volunteers that are interested in becoming docents to give tours and to program the facility. We are also working with Glendale Parks and Open Space Foundation on a nature education camp. We'll utilize both the ranch house that we have up there and also the nature education center. And also, we'll expand our Glendale outdoors program, the GO program. We operate four programs a year. We'll expand it to once a month where we bus South Glendale participants up to North Glendale, Duke Magin, and basically we'll have, we'll hike, arts and crafts. We'll have our Glendale Parks and Open Space folks give presentations on the different wildlife, how to hike, survival, environment, different plants, invasive species that are in our Wilderness Park, and so on. So we'll expand the program and work with our partners and our volunteers.
Thank you. Thank you. But however, I want to emphasize what my council member, Najarian, said. I joined my colleague. And to put a break, in my opinion, on spending money on this park after this project, of course, I don't know, we have to do something to.
This is, this is the.
This is the last.
Last phase.
This is, this is the last phase. And if you instruct staff not to secure, you know, Prop 68 funds and Measure A funds, we won't. But our Measure A funds are divided up between north and south. So we get a allocation every year for North Glendale and an allocation every year for South Glendale. We will be coming to council within the next couple of months for our Measure A program. We have funds from 18, 19, 19, 20, and 20, 21 fiscal years. So we'll come to council in the next couple of months to allocate those funds.
Which would be grant funds.
Which would be grant funds. We won't ask for DIF or CIP funds.
All right. Thank you. So we have, I have a motion for items, I guess, 8, C1, and 2?
Yeah, I'm, well, I thought I already moved the items, but I did it too, I did it too soon. But anyway, I'll move the items.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kassakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Bulanikian. Next item, please.
80 would be Public Works regarding a levy and annual assessment and preparation of the engineer's report for fiscal year 2020, 2021, for the North San Fernando Road Corridor Landscape Maintenance District. One, resolution initiating the fiscal year 2020, 2021, levy of annual assessment and ordering the preparation of the engineer's report. Two, resolution, preliminary approving the engineer's report for the fiscal year 2020, 2021, levy and collection of annual assessments. Three, resolution declaring the city council's intention to levy and collect the annual assessment for fiscal year 2020 and 2021.
City manager, yes, member.
Mayor Agajanian, members of the city council, this item is before you on an annual basis. Mr. Imran is here to provide you with information related to.
It's hard to believe that a year passed.
Very much so.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Agajanian and members of city council. We have a short presentation on this item. That's going to be done by Mr. Shay Eccleston.
Good evening, Mayor Agajanian, members of the city council. My name is Shay Eccleston-Bannor, and I'm with the Public Works Department. I'm here to give a brief presentation, just a few slides, on the North San Fernando Road Landscape Maintenance District levy for fiscal year 2021. In January 27, excuse me, January 2007, formation of the district was approved by a majority of property owners. It was determined at that time that property owners will receive a special benefit from improvements and maintenance of those improvements in the district. Maintenance of those improvements in the next fiscal year will include landscaping, utility costs, tree maintenance, and litter collection. This slide shows a map of the district. It's divided into five zones, which are color-coded. Zone 1, it runs along North San Fernando Road at the north end of the district. Zone 2 is the green area, south of zone 1 and north of the railroad tracks. Zone 3 is the yellow area in the northwest quadrant. Zone 4 is the blue area in the heart of the district. And Zone 5 is the purple area at the south end of the district. Each of those zones has their own individual budget. And collectively, the total balance of the levy, the total amount of all four zones for next year will be $71,520. That is less than the assessment this year. And the way that the rate is calculated for each individual parcel is shown in that formula on the slide. Essentially, you take the, the budget for any given zone and you divide it by the total EBUs in the zone. EBU is equal to an acre. And so then you take, that, that's how you get the assessment rate. You take that assessment rate, you multiply it by the area of the parcel in acres, and that gives you the parcel's levy So for your consideration tonight are three resolutions. The first will order the preparation of the final engineer's report. The engineer's report has a description of the levy and the benefits to be paid for from the levy. And it also includes a district roll, which shows the amount that each parcel will pay next year. Additionally, you will be asked to approve a resolution that preliminarily approves the draft engineer's report, which is attached, attached to your council report. And then also a resolution to give public notice for a hearing that will be held at the regular Glendale City Council meeting on July 7th on the proposed levy. At that hearing, property owners, members of the public will get an opportunity to issue protests or objections to the levy. And you will be asked to consider two resolutions. One, to approve the final engineer's report, and the second to order the levy for fiscal year 2021. And that's the extent of my presentation.
Thank you. May I ask you, didn't you say, of course, I was told before also, the, what the levy amount is this year, the balance, is less than fiscal 2019, 2020? Not that I'm complaining. Why is less?
It's less because we, when we calculated the levy for, for this year, we really stripped it down to just the contracts that we have in place for next year. So the tree maintenance contract, the parks has a litter collection contract. We.
We will spend less money. That's why we levy less.
It's, it's, the, the budget's less. So we're going to spend within our budget amount, but we reduced our budget amount.
Okay.
The budget is less, correct?
Okay. Thank you. Is there, yes.
So are we paying any special attention to the Southern Pacific Railroad right-of-way? Bushes or anything along the side? I know that's always a challenge to, to keep that area looking non-industrial. So are we, are we trying to do something there along that?
For, Councilmember Najarian, for, for next year, no. This, this contract really pays for those two contracts that I mentioned earlier. However, that's certainly something that we could look into and possibly include in, in a future year, adding those types of services.
I think it'd be a good idea. I think the, the members of that district would probably support that as well.
Mayor, members of the city council, it is something that we've had on our list, and I'm looking at, at Mr. Galanian, in terms of beautification of, of that area. And as you know, based on its location and the ability for live plants to live in that area is, is quite difficult. And we have found a number of issues just based on, on the area itself. And we continue to look at it and, and we will look at it and, and see if we can provide some levels of beautification in that area because it very much needs it. Outside of this process and, and within some of the budgets that we do have within Public Works as well as Community Services and Parks. And if we do have to expand that, we'll be before you to ask you for funding for that.
We may be getting a metro link station near that area. So the more we can, non-industrial would.
I, I agree. Councilmember Najarian, that, that area does need a lot of sprucing up. There's definitely a marked difference. And certainly, the character is different of the San Fernando Road area when you enter Burbank with some of the uses they have. But when you come into Glendale, there's a stretch that is, that needs some TLC, needs some better vegetation, needs some trees. And if plants are not growing there, that gives me some concern about what, you know, the conditions are for humans that are trying to grow there. But, you know, I'm sure we can find something because just the stones throw from there, you know, you have the Riverwalk and you have some beautiful vegetation that seems to be growing fine. So let's find something that will make the area more appealing.
We have our, part of the issue, it's a long, this is a long story, too. We've got our fiber that runs along that right-of-way. And there's a limitation on, you know, how, what kind of plants you can do lest it infiltrate the fiber cable and cause a, you know, a disruption. But we're being kind. Sprucing up, non-industrial. We want to use stronger words, I think, but we're being a little more diplomatic about it, so.
It's definitely something we'll look into.
Is there any other question? I just, the last question, maybe. Did we hear anything last year's or prior years, any property owner comes forward and complains that this is unnecessary or is too much? Or, did we have any complaints?
Also, not, not to my knowledge, but I will double check with Mr. Eccleston. Also, not to my knowledge, but I will double-check with Mr. Eccleston-Bowler to see if I wasn't aware of it and Public Works was.
So everybody paid the money, the levy amount, and was no problem? They were happy with our, what we are doing?
Mayor Agajanian, last year, we didn't receive any complaints. In all the years that I've been involved with this particular program, I think we've got maybe one or two.
Okay. Thank you. So, okay, this is just for the information, right? So we go to the next item?
We have.
Motion.
I'll move the item.
Oh.
Is there a second?
Okay.
I'll second if there isn't.
Roll call please, if there are.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kusakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes. What's next, please?
Next item is eighty, Public Works Implementation of Automated Pedestrian Traffic Signals Within the Glendale Downtown Area. One motion directing the Public Works staff to proceed with implementation of temporary automated pedestrian traffic signals and associated signs within the Glendale Downtown area.
Ms. Yasmin Beers.
Mayor Agajanian, members of the city councils, this is an item that was requested by council to be brought back for discussion this evening. Mr. Imran is here to provide you with that information and seek direction. Mr. Imran.
Thank you. Good evening, again, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. With the COVID-19 pandemic, several cities have had embarked on eliminating or reprogramming their pedestrian buttons so that pedestrians wouldn't have to push these buttons in order to cross the street, basically. And we had looked at this idea in our downtown area, analyzed it, and we are before you tonight to report that we can basically implement this program. We've looked at 74 locations throughout the greater downtown area, 74 intersections. And the implementation will take about two weeks. We would also accompany this process with posting of signs, specific signs, to notify the pedestrians that they don't have to push the buttons. So basically, what this, what this process would do is it would put the pedestrian's push button on what we call the recall, and the traffic signal would go through an automated cycle. It's not activated by the pedestrian pushing the button. And then the vehicular and bicycle traffic would come to stop and at a certain intervals. We would also recommend that, since this is due to this issue at the present time and with the lighter-than-normal traffic at this time, that this would be, you know, our recommendation is for it to be a temporary measure. We would monitor the situation, and once the traffic levels are back to near normal or normal, to revert this operation so that we could move the vehicular traffic throughout the downtown area. Just as a point of reference, there are a couple of other cities that have implemented this, City of Burbank, City of Beverly Hills, City of Los Angeles. And again, that's the, a quick summary of the scope of this project, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I mean, before I go to my colleagues, I want to mention, I have a problem with this. The problem is that the traffic is going to what it used to be. The way I see it, I go outside on Brand. I was driving on Brand on purpose, coming to the city hall. I took the Brand Boulevard, this was around, if I'm not wrong, like today, 1:30 or 2 o'clock I forget. That was from Glen Oaks to City Hall. And the traffic basically came to normal. I don't know how lighter is than before. If it's like 10, 15% lighter than before, I just don't want to go through all this, spend money, although the money is not that much. I have no problem with using, if there is a system which you don't touch it, touch the button, there are other types that you go closer as if you are pushing the button. I mean, but just to go through this exercise, somehow, I think after, pretty soon, will be basically traffic as heavy as it used to be. And the City of Beverly Hills, Burbank, and LA did it a while ago. If you had to do it, maybe we had to do it two months ago. And now, kind of, to me, it looks like it's late. But however, I want to go to Mr. Kusakian, please.
Yeah. I think this is a good idea. I think it was, you're right. It had been brought up, at least one resident had mentioned it to me early after the stay-at-home orders, and it seemed like the logical thing to do. But unfortunately, apparently, it was not as feasible then as it is now, but I'm glad we're doing it now. I think at least until we're completely through this COVID-19 situation, and as more and more people are walking and there's more foot traffic out there, it makes sense for us to put it automated so people are not risking touching surfaces, even though people have come up with some very creative ways to touch surfaces without using their hands. One concern I have, and this goes for a lot of the information that we're putting out, I saw the signage in the report, I noticed that it's only in English. This is going to be a significant departure or change in human behavior. And I'd like us to start considering ways of getting information out across the board. We can't have every, it doesn't make sense to be able to try and fit every single language on these signs that we do most of our translations to because then the original message gets lost. But inasmuch as through either a QR code, I don't know how many seniors will know necessarily how to use the QR code or are savvy, some are, some are not. But through advertisements and information, through local news outlets in the various languages that we always mention, I would like to urge that we do that so people know that, you know, what that sign is. And I appreciate the graphic image that says, "Don't push it," but, so people understand what it is, what the purpose is that it is for this period of the coronavirus. Thank you. And I like the idea.
Before I go to you, Mr. Brotman, I have a phone call. I guess I have to answer the phone. Is this related to this item?
Yes, it is, sir.
You are on the air with Mayor, City Council members, and staff.
Hi, everyone. I'm so glad I was watching this program today. I usually don't watch the city council on Channel 6. But there are other solutions I think you guys are not aware of, and I would suggest that you postpone a decision on this particular matter until all different options are presented to the council. And let me be more clear on that by telling you that there are sensors where, when you approach it without touching it, it's like pushing the button, which would be the most preferred way to go. Because the one that you guys are talking about, you're automatically assuming there's going to be a pedestrian. What that means is you're going to impede traffic. You're going to cause more traffic because when you push a button, the timing totally changes to give enough time for the person to go across the street. So you're assuming, in this case, there's always going to be a person crossing the street where it's not the case. So somebody's going to be waiting at a red light for a lot longer than they would have normally. Because if there is no person crossing, the timing changes on all the clocks. So I would strongly urge that, you know, until more further information or other ideas or concepts are looked at, the council should postpone this particular vote.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay.
This is actually what I meant. I was saying, if you want to change the button to have a sensor that you go close and it will turn the lights on, that's what I meant. Thank you for mentioning the sensor, which I did not remember to mention, but that's what I meant. But however, Mr. Brotman?
Okay. So I brought this item, or I asked staff to bring this item forward because basically, we should have done this irregardless of COVID. I mean, COVID gives us another reason for doing something that pedestrian advocates have been asking for, and many cities have done. So for instance, Burbank did their entire downtown pre-COVID. It had nothing to do with COVID, right? And now they're just expanding it to the rest of the city. I believe Pasadena, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe Pasadena did this before COVID. Many cities are doing this because of a mentality shift. The mentality is somehow cars, you know, automatically get ushered through an intersection while pedestrians have to beg to cross, right? And that's why they're called beg buttons. And we have this idea that it's, that that is normal, but that is not normal. And the caller says, "What if a, what if a car is waiting and there's no pedestrian?" Well, let me ask you, what if a pedestrian is waiting and there's no car? See, people are thinking about this the wrong way. So what I would say, and there are just so many reasons for this. It reduces speeding, but most importantly, it encourages more walkability. And it's one of, one of the policy positions that are in a book that I lent to our city manager called Walkable Cities, and it's got 100 different policy actions that cities can take to make their downtowns more walkable, and this is one of them. So it's something I would have eventually brought up, but COVID kind of created an urgency. So that's why, Mr. Mayor, I really don't think it matters. I mean, it would have been nice to get this done early. I don't think it matters. I think we should, and I do disagree with Mr. Imran in the sense that I think, like the park list, I think we should look at how this works for us and make a decision later and not automatically say we're going to reverse back. Because again, many cities are moving this direction, we're moving in this direction before COVID, having nothing to do with COVID, but having everything to do with making their city walkable. And I give you some, some slides, because there are a few things I kind of want to show to, to illustrate this. So here's a slide, and, no, so, you know, what if intersections were designed for pedestrians and not vehicles? So the car goes up and has to push a button to go through, and the pedestrian, you know, doesn't have to beg, right? We have a mindset which puts cars at the center of our world and pushes pedestrians to the, to the outside and discourages pedestrianism. And that's not good for our health, it's not good for our environment, it's not good for community, and so many other things. So I just wanted to show that. I thought it was funny, I came across it, and I think it's a good illustration of our, of how distorted our approaches are to city planning. Can you go to the next one? Oh, yeah. To Mr. Kusakian's point about signage. So a lot of cities are just nowadays, just, and I think Pasadena, Burbank, I'm not sure, just using cardstock and making their own signs. I think this is the one they're using in somewhere like South Pasadena or somewhere nearby here. This is not that far from here. But you can see they have three languages, so it could be done, right? And if you want, I can read the Chinese, but I won't, I won't do that right now.
I'll be more impressed if you can read the Armenian, but it's fine. We're gonna, I mean, if.
If there were Armenian there, I would read it for you.
You know, we're going to have to put four languages on there, and just having done elections translations, it can be, the more languages you put on there, the smaller the fonts get, and I'm very concerned about senior citizens being able to see them clearly. Although this is a good example of a sign with three languages.
Yeah. But I put it up there because I just wanted to show, because I had the same thought, that we need to do this in multiple languages. And then, do I have a third one? Oh, okay. The third one is that I would really like to see us integrate something called LPIs, Leading Pedestrian Intervals, into this plan. So a leading pedestrian interval basically gives the pedestrian a three-to-seven-second head start before the light turns for the car. So the pedestrian gets established in the intersection before the car starts to go. And the point here is you can see the pedestrians are coming into the intersection, and where a lot of accidents occur is when a turning car doesn't see the pedestrian in the intersection and hits them. Or in some cases, pedestrians, you know, maybe they have a disability, or they're elderly, they have a cane. I might even have another picture with that. I don't know if I put up another picture. There we go. I put up another picture just to show that sometimes people need more time to get through. So this idea of a leading pedestrian indicator, or interval, I'm sorry, is something that passengers have done through their whole downtown. And the Federal Highway Administration, which is not the most, you know, progressive when it comes to walkability issues, the Federal Highway Administration did a study and showed that it leads to a, there's a 60% reduction in pedestrian vehicle collisions when you implement LPIs. So my request would be, as we do this, we implement LPIs wherever we can, and, and let's test this out in our downtown. And let's see what this does to safety, to pedestrian collisions, and to walkability. I think it's a good experiment for us as a city regardless of COVID. So that is my piece.
Okay. Is there any, Mr. Najarian?
I have a question, please, Mayor.
Ms. Yasmin Beers. I'm sorry. Ms. Devine, Ms. Devine, go ahead.
Yes. Now, if I understand it, this is, that these lights are on predetermined cycles, is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, members of city council, council member Devine, at the present time or after we do this?
No, and it's new, in the new, this new system.
Yes, that is correct.
They're all on predetermined cycles. Okay, now, how does synchronization work? They're not all going to be green at the same time, they're not all going to be red at the same time. How do you monitor synchronization?
One of the elements of this, if we implement it, would be to reduce speeding, and the way that would happen is because they're not going to be synchronized, it would potentially lead to the car stopping at every traffic signal. So that would be the, that would be the downside of this after the implementation.
But. Downside or upside for safety?
But on Brand, we used to have, the traffic was not moving. If we do this, I'm sorry, go ahead, Ms. Devine.
No, I'm finished. That was the answer to my question.
All right. Do you want to wait until, to listen to the call?
Oh, there's more callers?
Yes, more callers.
Mayor, there are no callers for this item. The three callers are for the next item, which is oral communication.
For five minutes, okay. Mr. Najarian?
Okay, thank you. I hope my colleagues haven't made up their mind yet. If you have made up your mind, I'll be speaking to the members of the public. I really misunderstood this whole issue before us. It was my understanding that as we were going through the COVID pandemic, we were concerned about people touching the buttons with their fingers and obtaining a virus and then getting it on their body and becoming infected, or placing it so others are infected. And somehow, it's morphed into slowing down cars and doing other things. I thought we were, when you're talking about automated systems, that, as the mayor said, instead of pushing the button, we're going to have some sort of proximity sensor or motion detector like we do on Brand Boulevard. We've got two, maybe three crossings on Brand Boulevard where there's no touching required. They're mid-block crossings where, as you approach, there's a sensor, someone's here, and it activates the crosswalk. That's what I thought we were doing. If we're really concerned about COVID, if that's, I mean, that's the, that's the package this came in on, was we want to stop COVID. I have a few graphics of my own, Mr.
Would you like the Google one, the whole video?
Let's start, let's start the video. So there are companies out there that manufacture coverings. And I just picked this one out. This is the first one that came to my mind. So it's a film. I don't think there's any speaking on this. It's a film, it's applied to a surface. Inexpensive. These are example for door handles, but there are other examples as well. Maybe this push plate skin is the most analogous to what we're talking about. And it is a, from what I understand, it's a nanotechnology with crystals embedded in the surface that are activated with light, which self-clean. There's another picture up there. Well, this is what I found in my office building the other day. This is an elevator button, perhaps very close to the size of a pedestrian crosswalk button. And it's on there. You can see the clear film. It's called nano-septic. So you put those on the buttons, or handles, where there's going to be human contact, and it basically kills the virus if you have virus on your hands, right there. I think this is a solution to our problem. What I used to do in the past, and what I still do is, before, even before the pandemic, if I have to push a crosswalk button, I give it my elbow. I mean, it's very rare that I can get my elbow to touch my face and infect myself. I guess in an awkward situation, I could do that. So I think this is our, this really has to be our, our solution here. The problem with, with what we're talking about is, if I understand, these lights are going to be on a 24/7 programming as if there's someone at every, at every corner along all these 72 intersections, or 72 lights, pushing the button, whether it's 12 noon, or whether it's 10 PM, or whether it's 3 AM. So you're going to end up with red lights throughout. Now, I heard some of you council members, I forget who it was, but you said the solution to our downtown traffic, and everyone knows we have downtown traffic, is to synchronize the lights. And this is doing just the opposite. It's not, it's desynchronizing the lights. So there's a steady stream of red lights, which is going to create more traffic. It's going to create more frustration. What we're talking about here, in terms of the traffic speed, is traffic calming. This is a term that traffic engineers use to slow down the traffic. Now, if that's our goal, this is the wrong way to do it. In fact, it's an unrecognized way to do it. I did some research. The, the Institute of Transportation Engineers have the Traffic Engineers Handbook, sixth edition. Are you familiar with that, Mr. Imran?
Yes, I am.
I think everyone in traffic engineering is familiar with that. And they say whenever you want to do traffic calming, and traffic calming, they identified things like speed humps, speed lumps, tables, raised crosswalks, traffic circles, chicanes, chokers, realigned intersections, textured pavements. You first have to collect data. Now, your report says a lot of cities have experienced increased speed, and I'm not, I'm not giving you a hard time. You know I, I respect your work. It says that in view of the COVID pandemic, a lot of cities have experienced increased speeding on their roads by some motorists. Well, I don't know if there's, we've heard of Glen Oaks. Our police department has said there's some speeding on Glen Oaks. Three of these 72 intersections are on Glen Oaks, but the rest are in the mid-city area. Brand, Central, Wilson, Lexington, Doran, all the way out to Pacific. So I'm not sure if we really have that speeding problem in downtown. But what we haven't done is any outreach. We haven't collected any data. And, and it's quoted here, this is what they say, and I'm not a traffic engineer, but I read the last, actually since yesterday, when I learned that this is what was really going on. It says, "It is a practical necessity to involve residents in planning and implementation of traffic calming measures," which means citizen surveys, open houses, meetings with staff, neighborhood traffic committee. Well, we've got a transportation and parking commission, which may serve that role. And you know how much I respect giving items to our commissions. There's a project initiation, then neighborhood meetings, plan approval, plan implementation. In not one, in not one paragraph in that traffic handbook does it say the way, a proper way to reduce speeding and calm the traffic is by fussing around with the traffic signals. That's the Institute of Traffic Engineers. The U.S. Department of Transportation does not recognize traffic signalization to reduce speeds. In fact, they say that by monkeying around with that, you reduce fuel consumption and you cause greater air pollution by cars that are idling, waiting for that, accelerating, slowing down, and doing that. So I'm not sure what we're doing. If it's about protecting ourselves from COVID, there's a simple, cost-effective solution, and there's just one company that we put up there. If it's about traffic calming, let's identify where we have traffic issues, speeding issues, and let's go through the process that every city and every traffic engineer does. I think what's happening here is council is substituting its traffic engineering judgment for our traffic engineers, and we're doing something that's off the books, that's off the books totally. It's, I, I don't think it's, it's proper in what we're doing here. Is it traffic calming? Is it COVID? You know, are we using COVID to, and I know, I know Mr. Brotman is an advocate for pedestrian activity and all that, and non-vehicular transportation. And I am too, to a certain extent, but I don't think this is the way to do it. Furthermore, it's a net sum game. If you're gonna, if you're gonna make the lights act as though that there's someone wishing to cross, let's use Brand, east-west across Brand, you're at the same time giving the people that want to go north-south in Brand, pedestrians, a red no-crossing signal. So it's, you know, you can't have it, have it both ways. So I just think we're doing this the wrong way. I think the motorists, and I think the residents are going to go bananas. We've got a difficult situation at best in our downtown area. Some of you candidates talked about traffic signalization. I can look through those, I can look through those debates and all that and see what we were supporting. I, I just don't think we're, we're doing the right way. If we think we have a problem downtown, let's, let's just go through the steps. Let's measure the speeds, let's measure the volume, let's see how many pedestrians actually are trying to cross. Let's get a community meeting, let's give it to the Transportation Parking Commission, and let's solve it. And it might be a permanent solution, rather than this temporary solution, which you haven't said when it's gonna end. You said when traffic gets near its previous amount. We're almost there. I think we're, we're getting close to that. I mean, let's do it right. Let's take our time. Let's throw in all the great ideas, all the walkable city issues, the advanced timing for pedestrian crossing. I'm fine with that. That makes sense with me, but we need to go through the process. And that's all I'm saying. For now, let's get these, these virus preventive patches or, or films. And then let's, let's get together. We can do it in conjunction with our, our city traffic survey that we're going to be doing. And let's, let's do it the right way. Let's not force it under the guise of COVID. But let's, you know, let's be methodical in doing this. And that's the only thing I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Najarian. Ms. Devine?
Yes, thank, thank you. You know, I, I was, you know, Mr. Najarian started with, in case you haven't made up your minds yet. And it's funny, because I had made up my mind that I was going to support this. But then, when I asked my question about, are all the lights going to be red at the same time? And Mr. Imran said yes, it, I had a flashback of the emails and the phone calls and the people, how upset they were at the congestion at the 134 on Brand or Central on, at Sanchez. I mean, we tried to get synchronization there, because people were being stopped at this light and that. Just, I think it was two or three lights. If it isn't the whole city that we're stopping them at every light, we will have a revolution. So I, I think Mr. Najarian is absolutely right. I think besides the gas that we're, we're wasting at stopping and starting our cars and the emissions that we're, that we're causing by stopping our cars and sitting there, there's also the stress factor. And so I'm going to have to change my support to, to another alternative. I, I'm just saying that I, I just don't think that, after hearing the full plan, I just don't think it'll work. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you.
My, my main concern, Mr. Mayor and Council, is just making sure that the public is safe. I don't disagree with anything that necessarily that Councilmember Najarian mentioned. And, you know, I, I think you're coming from a very good logical place. And I think, you know, to be consistent with the, how ardently you pushed for the mask ordinance, that we should immediately try to find a way for people to not have to touch buttons at these crosswalks. So let's try to do that, and, and if, you know, not try to solve multiple issues with one idea. If it means that we put wraps or tiny crystals that self-clean or whatever it is, let's just figure that out so people are not being exposed to more germs than they need to.
Thank you. Are you done?
Yeah, I'd like to ask staff to see how quickly they can come up with measures that can protect the residents. And if it's not this, then let's do that. My, I was under the impression that this will do that. My intention wasn't necessarily. And for the record, I've never called it a beg button. I just learned something new this evening. You know, my, my goal was to make it easier for people to be able to walk around town without having to touch multiple surfaces.
Well, if I, if I might just, you know, I, I don't think I have the support for this. But the point, I think, was, was really, there are multiple objectives here. It is something that cities are moving towards to make their downtowns more walkable. Something like, you talk about synchronization. I think that's more on, on an arterial, like a Glen Oaks, not necessarily in the walkable downtown area. So I don't know. I, I'm, I don't think I talked about signalization during the campaigning. But I think it can make sense in, in areas where you do want to move cars through as smoothly as possible, and that's in arterials. I thought that this kills a number of birds with, with one stone. Obviously, you know, it makes it more walkable, and we have more people walking. It ha, it's not as disruptive to traffic now, because there are fewer people driving, and it helps potentially prevent any spread of the virus. And that's why I asked for it to be brought forward now. And a lot of cities are kind of accelerating this, even though many cities did it before COVID. But cities are accelerating it because of, of COVID. It's just another reason to do something that already makes a lot of sense. So I just, you know, I, I don't think I have the support, but I think it's something that, you know, we can try. It's a good time to try it, and it's something many other cities have done. And it is, it's the direction for pedestrianism and walkability. And, you know, if we come back to it, maybe we'll come back to it then, and we'll look at it, you know, in conjunction with the pedestrian plan and some other things that we can do, like the leading pedestrian indicator, which I think is a no-brainer. I mean, Federal Transportation Administration is telling us that it significantly reduces accidents, vehicular, pedestrian accidents at intersections. That, to me, is a no-brainer to go and do that, but.
I support you in all those, in all those efforts. In terms of making downtown Glendale more pedestrian-friendly, more pedestrian-safe. We don't necessarily want to hire more police officers to do that. And if there's means through engineering that we can solve that, whether it's raised platforms. I mean, there's a lot of things, and I'm just shooting from the hip at this point. But I think we should look into it, and, and I'm, I'm more than happy if that's a suggestion that we come back with specific ideas. A pro, well, it's a process, really, I think. We need to go through the process of making the downtown more pedestrian-friendly. Actually, it's a continuing process. I mean, we talk about it quite often now. I support that wholeheartedly.
Thank you. I have to say that pretty soon traffic is going to go back to what it was before. And they will keep complaining, they were coming to me and say, why you guys don't do anything about the traffic? I mean, we're going to have a situation that cars will idling again, there will be pollution, there will be loss of gas, money. So I personally, and the stress that the drivers will stay behind the traffic lights longer, that's in of itself, creates, they become impatient, they don't want to wait, it causes other problems also. Unfortunately, I can't support this item at this time. So with that, now, I guess.
There's no, there's no support. The only item was to, to move the items.
I mean, if there's no second, I'll, I'll move the item. If there's no second, I guess it doesn't go anywhere.
Well, I'll make an amendment. I'll make a substitute motion that we direct staff to, as quickly as possible, obtain a means to apply a substance to the buttons that would prevent the spread of the virus.
Why, but why specify like a substance, just say staff to develop, whatever it may be.
Staff to develop a.
A system for, for residents to be able to access or, or trigger the signal without physically touching it.
Okay, I'll accept that as a friendly amendment, as soon as, so, forget the film, what he said. That'll be my substitute motion.
Wait a minute, substitute motion, and we're going to vote now?
Wait a minute. So there was a substitute motion made. Do we need a second on the substitute?
I need a second, yes, sir.
If you just, if you want to incorporate it, it doesn't have to.
Can you repeat it?
Just, just something other than the substance, just for a way for people to not have to touch.
It's to direct staff, as quickly as possible, obtain a means to protect users of our crosswalk buttons from becoming infected with COVID.
That's a different issue now.
No, that's.
That's what you're talking about, just the button.
That's all, that's all I'm saying at this.
So that's why I'm saying, maybe we leave this for a future. If you're talking just the bottom now, button.
Just the buttons.
Button now, not this, what is in front of us.
Correct. I'm not talking about the automated system.
Why you don't bring this up next time?
Well, because we want to do it as soon as possible, I think.
I second the motion.
Ms. Devine?
Is that clear? Is it clear?
Yes, I second the motion.
To provide some additional precautionary measures on the, on the buttons, and end it there.
Let's end it there, seconded by Ms. Devine.
And if, okay, never mind.
Okay, so we have a motion now, and second?
Substitute motion, second.
But, okay, what's the motion again? You.
Precautionary measures.
No, no, wait a minute, Mrs.
Well, he, he made the motion. I don't want to, I don't want to stand. I think the, what I heard was for directing staff to look at additional precautionary measures for the pedestrian buttons.
Okay, that's it.
Right.
That's it. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Kosakian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Agajanian?
Yes, thank you. What's next?
Next would be oral communications. The discussion is limited to items, not a part of this agenda. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report. I believe there are four callers on the line.
Okay. I go to our callers. Caller number one, you are on the air with mayor and city council members. Please mention your name, if it's possible. You are on the air.
Hello?
Yes.
All right. Hi, my name is Haik Mahmuran, and, good evening, council members. I'd like to speak today to the roots of the Black Lives Matter uprising for the past few weeks, the sweeping nature which have given me hope for actual meaningful changes for the first time in a while, a real pushback to systemic racial, social, and economic violence that national, state, and city council members like you all over the country have been unleashing for decades and centuries. George Floyd, may he rest in power, was a black man killed by police. But what caused the uprising across the country, as you know, was that it was yet another murder of a black person, which would go unpunished if people did not rise up. Moreover, though it was a stark and extreme example of racist violence in our country, it is part of systemic racism that dispenses violence across the board, in education, in healthcare, in housing. Renters are disproportionately people of color, disproportionately immigrants, and disproportionately working paycheck to paycheck. Fighting for housing as a human right is an anti-racist fight, and the position against housing as a human right is a deliberately racist position. In the midst of a devastating economic and health crisis that disproportionately affects renters, your discussion of all the other items today sounds horribly tone deaf at best. The longer our city council allows our, and thousands of our neighbors suffering and fear and disenfranchisement to grow, the deeper the cut of injustice that council members are inflicting with their inaction, the more tension there builds for my neighbors to no longer be able to take it quietly, or politely, or peacefully. That's what neighbors are telling me when I walk around Glendale. We are not interested in anything short of bold, resolute action. Today, for you, it looks like becoming the loudest advocates for rent and mortgage cancellation in the country. Also today, my and all my neighbors' demand is for you to match the strongest existing tenant protections in the country. It's a narrow window of opportunity for the most ardent anti-renter members, ARA and Pola. Or only a few years from now, your names will be added to the long, infamous list of racist segregationists. Thank you.
Thank you.
Racist? Did he just call me racist?
You are on the air with mayor, city council members, and the staff.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Rashmanda. I'm just calling to let city council know that shame on you for this agenda, having nothing to relate with tenant protection, when we're in a literally pandemic and housing crisis. Even since before the pandemic, we've been pushing for better renter protections, yet your agendas go empty with, with not having this on the topic. You guys keep saying you want to embrace Glendale, you want to embrace your residents, but you have showed again and again how much you fail us. You have failed us, and shame on all of you. I have no idea how you guys sleep so peacefully in your mansions at night when renters are really scared for their life, dealing with landlord harassment and starts with eviction, even though right now we have an eviction ban, which is still, the laws in Glendale are still very weak for tenant protection. So I have no idea, when we are out here, really struggling, really fighting for our rights and fighting for our community, you guys can sit there peacefully, talk about traffic lights. Traffic lights, are you serious? We're in a pandemic, we're in a housing crisis? Shame on all of you, all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. You are on the air with mayor and city council members and the staff. Hello? Hello, you are on the air.
Okay, mayor, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Mayor Agujian, members of the city council, and city staff, my name is Herbert Molano. My, the topic that I want to bring up this time, is a, is an issue of housing and how cities in the past have addressed the housing shortage. Now, as most of you know, I am a landlord here in Glendale, and I've been a landlord here for over thirty years. And the, I'm a housing provider, and the housing that I provide, and those investments that I made long ago, were made for my retirement. And it just so happens that I am retired now, and I look forward to that investment to pay off eventually. But I'm also very considerate of my tenants, just like most, nearly all of apartment owners, especially the mom and pop are. We are impacted significantly by many of the rules that impact homes or properties built before 1995. Everything that is built after that is not controlled at all. But in a certain sense, the income and the investment and hard work of decades of work, we don't get the type of guaranteed pension guarantees that the city staff and the city employees get, where if the investment companies do not produce the revenues or the income, the taxpayer foots up the bill, and they continue to basically earn what they've always earned, or the expectation of it, once they retire. In our case, no, the industry is being hit very, very hard. And many of the policies that occurred decades ago are impacting us now. Up until 1975, the biggest problem in the rental housing industry was an excess, let me repeat that, an excess of housing. The biggest problem that landlords had is vacancies. So what happened between 1975 and now? The increased restrictions that have occurred to the housing community have created a housing shortage. And the only way, the true way to remove this problem is by increased housing. And of the councilmen that are present, I think there's one person who has done the most to increase housing, even though it's not affordable housing, but it's Councilman Najarian. We have increased significantly the number of apartments in Glendale, in areas that were easily accommodated, but we do have an affordable housing shortage in Los Angeles County, over 500,000. And I think the callers have a point, that the council needs a dedicated month where you are discussing all of the various different issues by which we can increase affordable housing. It's a topic that merits discussion. But I think that the council also needs to take a look at what other mistakes that were made in good conscience have resulted in the housing shortage that we have. And I think that is the balanced view that we should take. I do not believe that we should be sacrificing a significant amount of, of our retirement income, you know, for this purpose, because many of us are older and may need medical assistance, or maybe we're supporting other family members. These discussions oftentimes do not get proper hearing. And I would like for the city council to assign a month to discuss the shortage of affordable housing and how to increase it in Glendale. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Molano. You are on the air with city council members, mayor, and staff. You are on the air.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes. Please, go ahead.
Um, so I also want to speak about the concerns about housing that have been raised by some of the previous callers. I think I first want to say, it's really shameful that this meeting has been happening for three and a half hours, and the city council has not chosen to put housing on the agenda, that we're putting housing on the agenda, when this is clearly one of the most pressing issues that you are elected to, to deal with right now. And I think, I, I want to echo a lot of the points made by the two tenants who called in about drawing the connections between housing and racial justice, and, and really, you know, amplifying the, the call that this needs to be a priority for the city council. And, and I even, you know, the landlord who just called in, I think, raises a good point that some landlords are, are doing everything that they can right now, maybe to deal with the unprecedented crisis that renters are experiencing. I know personally, my landlord started driving for Postmates. Like landlords, like, we're all, everybody in this house is trying to do everything they can to come up with the money to pay rent. Like, everybody is scrambling, but the inaction of legislators and city council is creating a situation where we're about to face an unprecedented eviction crisis. And you know who's gonna suffer in that? Renters are gonna suffer in that, and these small, you know, mom-and-pop landlords that everybody seems to care so much about, that's whose housing is gonna get foreclosed on, that's who's gonna get foreclosed on. And, and yes, tenants are gonna bear the brunt of that, and we as renters are gonna, you know, face the potential of, of mass displacement, but if you claim to, to care about the interests of small landlords too, like, you guys gotta take some action. I don't, I don't really know how else to put this to you. It's really shameful that this wasn't on the agenda, that this isn't something that city council is putting front and center. Like, you guys got elected to do a job, and it seems like you're really advocating it right now. And I think the, the points, the rest of the points that I wanted to make were made more eloquently by the previous callers, so I yield my time.
Thank you. Ms. Yasmin Bir.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, just, just to mention what the city council approved on June 2nd by way of resources appropriations for this coming year, very much related to the pandemic and the issues that, that many of our callers who are calling in in terms of assistance programs, and this council took the very bold step to implement housing assistance programs to the tune of $6.25 million. Affordable housing development, you set aside another $6 million. The rental rights program is still in place, and you maintained the funding for that from last year and from previous year, in 1920. The programs that you had in place and, and you are still supporting include affordable housing development, another $7.09 million. The monthly housing subsidy program, of which 1,000 households will receive $300 for a two-year period of time, to the tune of almost $3.9 million. So I just wanted to mention, this council has spent quite a bit of time on, on these issues, and you have all grappled with many of the things that are being brought forward. Outside of, of the emergency orders that are in place, and the steps that you have taken in terms of the moratorium that is in place until the end of this month, I think it's important to state that this council made very significant allocations related to housing assistance programs that most other cities that I'm aware of have not done. And you were able to do so by, by way of Measure S. So I just wanted the, the record to be, to be clear on that.
And we had purchased two properties recently, which we are going to have 500, approximately 500 affordable, affordable housing units beside what Ms. Yasmin Bir has mentioned here. Anyway, thank you. May I, I think, what's next? A German?
A German.
Do I have?
Move to adjourn.
We'll move to adjourn.
The memory, yes.
Darren Rankin, thank you. Adjourning in memory of Darren.
Mention again, because I was talking, mention the name of the deceased, please.
Darren Rankin.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a second?
In his memory, and we are adjourned at 9:45 PM. Thank you.
Thank you.